So then there is something.
Okay, there we got it. We're good to go. Sorry about that.
Okay. I make a motion to call the meeting to order. Is there a second, please? One second. Roll call.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Lichten. Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Is there any board member who has anything to disclose or conflict of interest with any of the agenda items before us this evening?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. With that being said, I would like the clerk to please read the open meeting compliance certification saga.
Mr. Lake, my friend. Okay, the public can have opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they occur in the meeting and also on general matters at the end of the meeting. Speakers can comment once in each comment window if it is on a specific agenda item. It is not a debate, a deposition, or a panel discussion. Speakers must step to the front of the room if this were able. Alternatively, they may provide comments from where they are sitting. If an attendee is participating via web conference technology such as Zooms, the clerk will announce how attendees should signal that they wish to comment. This may differ by platform, but typically is come through the raise your hand feature. We are using Zoom, so I ask for attendees through Zoom to please raise your hand or put your comments in the Q and A, and I'll be happy to read them to the board. If you put it in the chat function, I do not read the chat, so we will be lost. Thank you. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be an exemption for any kind of illegal people protected by New York State law. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers must limit those remarks to three minutes on any given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they may have to another speaker. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, only interrupt with speakers during their remarks for the purpose of clarification or information. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or the representatives may address the board by written communications to village clerk@villageofpittsburgh.com. All written communications will be included in part of the quote record, and you will be attached within these minutes for that meeting. At the center's request, written communications will be read aloud by the clerk at the meeting and will adhere to the three-minute timeline. If printed materials or other media are provided by attendees during the meeting, they must be submitted to the village board with optional distribution to audience members. All materials will be part of the quote record. Product distributional materials to audience members only is prohibited.
Thank you.
We got it, the first one.
Well done. Okay. Well, with that being said, treasurer's report?
So soon.
But wait, there's more? Yeah?
Okay. Only have a stack here tonight. All right, so you received the treasurer's report from Brooklyn, and it was in your packet. It is no need questions. Any other items?
Did we run the attorney bills by the T C B A and H P D G?
Yes, it is. My understanding that they were sent to the appropriate parties.
Yes, related bills, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, no question.
This is the related to bill pay or is the financial reports?
You got it, you got it. No, you're ahead of me.
Are we doing bill pay?
Sure.
Is that correct? Oh, okay. I assumed that's what we're doing.
I did have a couple of questions then related to a couple of attorney fees. One second, let me just. There are attorney bills related to a petition brought against the village regarding the arboretum on six twenty-two, and I was wondering if you got some details on that charge. Additionally, there's a syllabus says a telephone happened to the mayor and the CEO regarding unauthorized activity in the arboretum. Is that something that I don't recall any of this, I'm wondering if you got some more information about those expenses?
If we had known ahead of time, we could have researched it and refreshed our memories. So why don't we do that? Why don't we, you know?
Hold that portion of the, sure, of the bill? Or just the whole payment?
We'd have to go back and look at the records. I mean, I.
You have to go in front of me. I can't.
Yeah, we have to. Yeah, it would have been helpful if you just had that in advance.
Which it was to the village, which for, which, you know?
This was on six twenty-two, so I guess these are the June, July bills.
For the village board or for?
These are consultations with the, with our council from the mayor and the county office.
So why don't we, yeah, why don't we just go?
I mean, can I, what's, what's the question?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, why don't you state your question? That'll be helpful.
Sure. These two charges, we've got hundreds of dollars bills related to council relating to the arboretum, and I don't know what we need counsel about. So I'd like to understand that. Not that I doubt that these charges occurred at the time of September, but I'd like to understand what we're.
So some more clarification.
I don't, I have no idea what you're talking about, what the petition would be in reference to unless there was a written petition regarding the arboretum, because there's no legal action that was taken. So it would have to be a written petition that I would have reviewed with regard to the arboretum. The second charge would have been in relation to some activity at the arboretum that was not previously approved by the board, therefore approved.
That might have been something that you were dealing with, too. You know, why don't we investigate it? Because otherwise we'll.
You know what? Just take the two charges on.
For now, and then we'll take a look.
I'd rather get the rest of the bill.
Oh, okay. Take it off. And then investigate and then.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, if you can form me questioning, be able to do a questioning, and then we'll reduce the bill, and then we'll roll all the other papers.
I would define can or attorney for this as well. I believe it is time to be spent. It's a matter of understanding about what the issue is for.
Nonetheless, let's get more clarification, because you're asking for it. So let's do that for sure. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions on the bill pay? I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Question? Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next up.
Okay. I presented the board with financials for June, July. Obviously, the only reason you need to get September is any plus this week.
So before we get to that, I want to thank you for that, because you closed three months post audit with a two-week vacation in the middle there. So all people doing that.
No problem. Actually, now things are running much smoother closing once I can release from our plan to move forward with the new budget year. I was able to close this quite happily. Really, I guess I'll turn it to the board if there's any questions, because there's not a lot of meat into these financials. It's just the beginning. I do know there is a negative number. Things unforeseen, because it's related to our software.
Contract?
Yeah, it's the fees. In case we have an issue, it's, we give them a call. So it came in, I think a hundred and twenty-one dollars, a hundred and seventy-one dollars higher than we budgeted. So I will need a budget transfer for it. I'm trapped for that, because I need to look at September. Want to see if there's anything else. I don't see anything else, so I'd rather try to get it on one level. It's not a major issue.
Was there a particular technical problem that we had that pushed this over?
No, no. There's, this is one thing for the board to understand. Fees are going up, the cost of doing business is going up, our vendor's cost is going up. This is just increased in the cost of the software servicing agreement.
Okay.
So if there is no problems with any of the financials, I would just ask the Google for off your staff.
I'll entertain a motion. Anybody?
So moved.
Second?
I'll say.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Trustee Lichten.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Zach, are you giving an update? You're not. Okay, then can I ask you a question? Because it does relate to the numbers in here. The maintenance on the equipment, most of that money is not tapped yet. And I would have guessed that in the summer, there would have been some maintenance.
Most of it's been preventative maintenance that's been done in shop, which is pretty cheap. Right now, we have a flush truck that's out for service. We kind of saved ourselves on some heavy maintenance costs with the little cabin. The new one's supposed to arrive next week, so we're in good shape with that. And that mostly is set there for aging equipment. If something does fail, the money is there for us to fall back on.
It's not preventative. It's in case there's a problem? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, you ready for me again?
Of course.
Employee healthcare this time of year, we have to review our employee healthcare. The numbers came in within what we budgeted for the increase for this year. I'm asking that the board continue with the plan that we have, except the current healthcare as presented.
What did they raise?
It's eight point five percent. It's not that bad. What we did see, though, is in the deductible increase, so we're still within the percentages provided that we anticipated.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the healthcare maintenance percentage.
So moved.
One second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. The next thing I am bringing to you is candlelight night. The committee started meeting, and the village usually, as part of the process, will candlelight night provides the security for the event. It's to our benefit to make sure that everything's running smoothly out there, so helps keeps us out of lawsuits, other issues, and perfect client security, and keeps everybody safe. The current quote is higher than last year and is anticipated, but it's over two thousand, so it's over my threshold authorized. So I'm asking the board to go ahead and authorize that donation.
Same coverage, just a higher cost?
I think there's eighteen security people out there. It might have been a little bit increased, but I think they added personnel to enhance our safety.
Well, there were so many people last year. I think that was a consideration.
Yes.
Last year, I think candlelight night was one of the largest turnouts. I think everybody was happy to be out.
So I think it's to the benefit, especially having, I think they're putting additional at the four corners and considering the way things are right now, it's probably good to have people directing people across the street as we need. So if I can have authorization for that.
So moved.
Second?
I'll say.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Lichten.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. And then the village hall roof. So the board had heard the sad sag of our roof last meeting, and I'm sorry I missed it. The board requested that we reach out to Barrow. I'm going to turn over to the building inspector, because he spoke to Barrow, and they provided, and so did the superintendent. So I need that to discuss all this part.
Jen Barrow came out and went out and looked at her proposals, and she recommended Elmer Davis based on the level of their proposals, the materials that they're using, and the warranty. They've given the best warranty of all three. They're in the middle of the pack, but they give a better whole program for the roof with a twenty-year warranty.
Yeah, and the other warranties, if I remember, were like ten years. So this is a twenty-year.
Yeah.
And they're a known entity to Barrow.
Yeah, and Elmer Davis is a thirty-six-year company. I mean, they're very reputable, very well-known.
Which underquote was that again? What was the name of that under again?
Elmer.
Elmer.
Elmer Davis.
Yeah.
Questions? Did they also offer any guidance or information regarding the material being used and how they would work with what we have existing?
Um, that's a good idea.
Elmer's, Elmer's is kind of the best of both worlds, because they don't want to tear it off. They don't want to go in and compromise anything underneath the existing roof. They're going to go right over what's there with the new substrate on boards and then apply the new rubberized roofing to that versus trying to tear it off, which could create a, might create more than what we're looking at. Some, like when the other coach was left, but their extras, every little thing would have, you know, it would have ran it off. They're, like you said, they're very well-known, they're very reputable. The gentleman came out, very knowledgeable about the roof and feeling with the copper and keeping it consistently with what the building has now.
And my understanding was the principal from Barrow knew that they were familiar with working with historic properties as well. Okay.
Jen recommended Elmer Davis over the other, the other brand.
Yeah, even though, you know, they're not the cheapest, I'd rather go with some, you know, do it right.
They're not cheap. They're in the middle.
We're in the middle.
Were they the cheapest?
But not the, but not the cheapest.
No, Elmer Davis is in the middle.
One of them was only fourteen thousand.
Yeah.
It's really cheap.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that one, the first one was nineteen five forty. Elmer Davis came in twenty-one one seven, but the first one was nineteen five forty with a ten-year warranty. Elmer Davis comes in twenty-one one seventy-seven with a twenty-year warranty.
And the village will be taking, once we have a decision, an application to the historic preservation board?
It's not required. I actually presented it to the historic preservation board. It's not visible at all, the flat roof. We're not touching any of the top roofing. It's the unvisual portion of the flat roof on the roof. And I will say, if you're looking at it, Jackson, for some time, would be, there are probably twenty-five to thirty bubbles in there right now. And if any of it break, which some are already starting to be compromised and cracking, we will have an issue here.
So, and is it my understanding that the one that we're, we're looking at, Elmer's, can accomplish the work prior to this winter, that they can actually schedule us? So we wouldn't have to.
They can get it in this year.
Okay, because that's, that'd be a concern as well.
I'm going to apologize to the board. I think I have the one proposal from Elmer Davis. I have the twenty-three six.
Yeah.
No, that's one for the roof roofing. The twenty-three six, the first one that came on.
Oh, we need the other.
So we don't have the right one.
The other one.
Can you give me the right one?
That's also, you said it was a twenty-year one?
Yeah, twenty-year, yeah.
Yeah, because this is.
Ah, you caught that. Okay. So see, here's the copper roof around, and then it's this piece that's the flat. Yeah. And how, and this is the part that's bubbled. Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks.
Ariel, you. Okay. Let's see what we have here.
I'm sorry, okay.
I've seen it. I'm good with it. I see.
My question to the board is, for the village hall, we currently have fifteen thousand in building maintenance. That line is going to fall short, so I guess I would request to transfer some money from contingency. I hate to take from that line at this time, but.
Seems appropriate.
We need, we need to cover it if the board moves ahead.
Cool. So we're looking at a short call of like ten thousand? Less than that.
Less than that, about sixty-six.
Between two sixty-six. So what is the figure that you're asking?
I'm asking that you authorize me to transfer the difference from contingency to the village hall building maintenance, cover the cost of the roof.
Can we stay with that, what that figure is?
It would be total spent twenty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-three, whatever the contract is.
Yeah.
Fifteen thousand.
Minus?
Minus.
Minus fifteen thousand. So for the motion, we have a specific number?
I'm.
Six thousand seven hundred and seven.
Six thousand seven hundred and seventy-three.
I'll entertain a motion?
Can I see the?
Oh, I'm sorry. Please, shortstop. Here we go.
I'm sorry?
Are you sure you want the boys that one coming out?
Well, we're going to have to address issues as they come along. If it's an emergency, we'll have to deal with it. I don't want to take, it's so early in the morning here. I don't want to wake up contingency, but not knowing, we can try to deal with these as they come along. I mean, we're going to need, this, reality is, we're sitting in a wonderful old building. To say that that's the only maintenance issue I'm going to have this year, when I know my bathroom toilet needs to be replaced in here?
Thanks for sharing.
I am sharing. I'm going to need more for building maintenance. But I, what I want to do is a deeper dive into the budget after September's numbers and see if I see any, I don't want to say we've changed, but I want to see if I can maneuver anything that isn't going to stay direct just from contingency. I hate to wake up contingency so early.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from Elmer Davis on the twenty-year amount, twenty-year warranty.
And should we also say with the transfer of six thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars from?
I'm sorry, the balance of the contingency right now, what we reset?
We haven't touched it in a week, so. We have twenty-seven-five in there, so we're not under twenty.
We're not waking it up entirely, so we still have.
As I said, I don't want to do that. It's way too soon.
Okay, I'll second. Me in a second. Roll call, please.
Okay, Trustee Lichten.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. The village hall makes you, and I think that's all I have for it.
Okay. How about if we, you know, defer some of this and start to get into some agenda items, you know?
You can skip me in.
Yeah, wait till, okay. Yes, Steve.
Do you want me to reach out to Elmer Davis then, or will you?
I'll sign off.
Yeah, yeah, she'll pop.
We'll send it in, and then we're going to talk to him if there's any discussion.
Yeah, I might be getting, you know, since we know, we can get them on the schedule.
Yeah, and thanks for your help on that, too. Yeah, that's great. Okay, we're going to start in on some meeting items. Bill Smith is going to be joining us a little bit later, so why don't we move to the second item, and that's, well, it's items two and three, really, about the arboretum. And before we start in, we do have Scott. Oh, there you are. Hi, Scott. Maybe if Scott could just sort of give us the background of sort of where he is, you know, the survey, kind of where we are with next steps as well. So I think.
Can I ask a, ask a question? So I'm only here through Bill Smith's presentation.
Okay.
And the open meetings law is one that I would like to vote on. So do we have time to do this and then that before Bill gets here? Or should we do the open meetings discussion now?
I'm, you know, I'm open to whatever board members want to do. Sounds good. Bill Smith will be here about seven-thirty. We can do it all? Keep it moving?
Okay, so immediately after this, we'll do the open meetings discussion.
Yeah.
And then Bill Smith will present.
I guess, I guess that's where we're going. So with that being said, if you can just, because I know you did the survey, you reported back to us, and let's pick up on that and kind of where we are.
Let's see. We last left off on the survey. I had circulated it by all of you via email. I think I received one final comment from Justin regarding changing the text to more specifically what you had said on one of, on the item that relates to the master plan in Northwest Quadrant and that, that aspect of things.
Can you all hear Scott? Yeah, I'm.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, so if we can just.
Sorry.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, so the survey boundaries, we feel comfortable with. We've established those. They're on the drawing. That drawing can be conveyed to a consultant. If you have a consultant in mind, that consultant can use that drawing for schematic or conceptual design, however you'd like to go, and you can have confidence that you have the correct perimeter, the correct, correct boundaries, or you have the, the line that was established under the conceptual mapping that was originally done. So I think you have a good basis to work from. I think when we spoke about it last time, it was noticed that the DPW parcel encroaches on some of the canal lands, where we previously thought those lands might be Village of Pittsburgh lands. They are not. That's what the survey determined. How you choose to deal with that is up to you.
And so the canal land is owned by the Canal Corporation?
Right.
Just, you know, for everybody listening. And, and so the acreage that was identified in the survey was how much?
Eleven point two acres.
Eleven point two. Okay. So there's that piece.
So, so that is what you, that's what you have to work with, as I understand. I think the previous conceptual plans thought that number was larger, but that's what it turned out to be. Once again, I think in the digital world that we're now in, I have something that can be conveyed to someone that they can use, some, kind of like what we did on shown place with the consultant that came in there. We had digital mapping on that that we could share with them, so they could do their work. So that's, that's the status on the survey.
Right. And then we had, and I think many of you folks here tonight, you know, the friends of the arboretum and people interested in, you know, working with that. It last May, actually, we had done that PowerPoint presentation and then really talking about next steps. And so maybe you can refresh us with that, because now the survey, you know, is getting the survey done, getting in a professional landscape designer, engineering firm to assess the needs of the DPW. We had spoken about that as well, Zach. Scott, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm just sort of going through what had been presented.
I think then and after the discussions have sort of been getting a consultant that the village feels comfortable with to come up with a design of the parcel. This is, this occurs to me to be a very unique parcel. You have two very different uses going on here simultaneously, so it's, it's tricky. But I think a landscape architect is the right professional to hire in this regard. That being said, you know, another item that comes up usually right at this point is cost of such a person and how that cost is covered. And for example, with the shown place RFP that we did, you know, we, we had the consultant assist us with grant writing and getting the money. So I guess it occurs to me that perhaps the board wants to consider seeing if this project qualifies for a grant and obtaining some funds to help out that way. But I think you are probably looking for some consultant very similar to the one who's, who did the shown place project. That's what I think.
Yeah, we had, I don't even know how to say, is it Fisher-Trowbridge or Trowbridge-Fisher?
Yeah.
They've all bought each other and consolidated, so.
And, and perhaps you want to do what we did before, which is put out an RFP and see who's, who's interested. I mean, that was a very, we, we contacted a lot of consultants on that one in the, in the market, you know, is what the market is. So it's, it's difficult to find good qualified people right now, I think, in every aspect of what's going on out here.
But there's also grant money out there, you know? That's the thing right now. There's a, there's a lot of grant funding that's out there. So it's also could be an opportunity if we can partner with the right firm to help move this forward. This would be great. And then once, once that's done and that assessment's done and the design work and all of that, the DPW, how do we manage that? Then we go through the actual process of, you know, the SWIP, we're doing the environmental review. Where, what, help us understand sort of.
I think, I think the way the process would work is you secure enough money to retain a consultant.
Yeah.
The consultant works with you to come up with a conceptual design. When you're ready to take the conceptual design to a formal site plan application, then you talk with our building inspector, Steve, and you get the, the site plan application. You submit that along with the appropriate SEACER environmental form, and it runs through the planning work.
There's LWRP and, yeah, all of that. Okay.
And then, then obviously we'll get review comments, and everyone will have a chance to see it and eventually be approved. And then, once it's approved, you can issue a building permit for whatever action they're proposing to take. And.
So that's really the process.
That's really the process. And Steve, you know, please weigh in if I, if I missed anything. There's a SEACER step, isn't there? Yes.
I see you mentioned SEACER, yeah.
And what about SWIP, Stormwater? And what about SWIP, Stormwater?
Yeah, it would depend on the plan, you know, it really, it really depends on what the proposal is, as to what steps have to be made.
And so, and that would be developed with, with everybody, you know, it's, it's, it's working with our community, so that's a good thing.
I think it would take, you know, it takes a, a well-versed consultant, I think, like the one that you got for shown place, because they'll be balancing, you know, the community needs, the DPW needs, interpretations by the planning board, interpretations by the village board. It's some, it's a challenging position.
Key moving parts?
Yeah, I would say, it's not, it's, it's not a small project.
Okay, but that's sort of the model.
Yeah, that's, that's how I would look at it, if this were to be dropped into my lap, and I'm, and I'm not suggesting that I'm the right consultant for this, but if, if a comparable project were dropped in my lap like this, as I have experienced before, that's how I would propose, propose to do it.
I think that's helpful for everybody to understand process.
Yeah.
For this as well. Jeff, from a legal standpoint, is there anything you, you feel that we need to add in terms of process and how we really want to move forward, you know?
Still kind of wrestling with the subdivision issue.
Okay.
Whether, and the consultant might very well have something to say about that, whether it becomes two parcels, whether.
Oh, whether we need to subdivide the property?
Yeah.
To establish a portion of the parcel legally assigned to the arboretum and a portion?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know if you need to do that.
Neither, I think maybe the, the, yeah, consultant would help guide us, you know, with that. That might be an additional step, just the subdivision, so.
Okay, so that's a question.
I mean, the reason I'm thinking subdivision is you got a park land and it would be clearly defined. But I suppose the site plan would also clearly define it.
Right.
You, you can also do, in lieu of a subdivision, because that's, Mineral County, that's quite a, quite a bit of action. You can do a deed restriction or a declaration.
Yeah, and maybe just that, that's correct.
Do a declaration.
With a, with a, with a description.
Yeah.
Which might be the legally smartest way to go.
A lot less red tape.
Yeah, yeah. Thoughts, Scott?
Okay, that's helpful, and we'd also have to sort it out with Canal Corporation.
So, how that deed restriction, well, that's the next piece, how the deed restriction looks is the deed, the village would put a deed restriction in the chain of title which describes out the arboretum parcel, so that it would be restricted, its use would be restricted.
Right, okay.
And then, site plan would tell you what you're going to do with that, you know, that would plan out the parcel.
Right.
Both parcels, actually, if you were going to change it, you would be the other. But when you ask about the canal work, that would mean we'd have to enter into some kind of lease or, we weren't going to change the buildings, we could just do a boundary line agreement of some kind, they would do that, I think they'd rather just do a license to us for what we're using right now, like we do on Shane Place, I don't think they would be interested in a long lease.
Right, okay.
It might be a license agreement.
I think, I agree with that, I think, I don't see them wanting to change that boundary that we uncovered. But I also think that when the village owns the entire parcel, you're not conveying it to another entity, you're really conveying it to yourself.
Oh, yeah, for the deed restrictions, yeah, you're not.
Yeah, so.
You're really just doing a declaration.
Yeah, so I think a declaration is the way to go.
Besides the actual size coming in at 11 and something?
Two, yeah.
A little bigger than we thought. The number we always threw around was 10, but whatever.
Well, we threw around 10, I believe, that was the acreage.
It's down 13 acres.
That was the acreage for the arboretum.
Yeah.
But the entire parcel is 11.2, so if you subtract, no, yeah, the entire parcel is 11.2.
Take 10 out of it, it's 1.2.
Yeah. But then, but then I used the line that you gave me, and that, that reduced that 10 to, I'm trying to remember the number.
Nine something.
Nine something, yeah.
I think, if I might just chime in, I think that originally the concept map included some of the parcels to the north, which is not actually our, and so the Canal Corporation land, including, but also extending beyond the encroachment. So I think originally in the concept plan, that entire slated area of land is 12 something, right? And modified based on certain work and the existing lines coming out.
You've got 10 acres that are dedicated in Blackwood, that's clear.
Right, and so then the remaining acreage at this point going forward, for example, for DPW, is 1.2, as opposed to roughly it was 13 that, originally, that was thought?
Right, so.
And then it would have been 3 to DPW.
DPW would have gotten 3 out of that.
DPW was 12.
12, 12 something, I can't quite remember, okay, 12 and 2 point whatever, okay.
So other than that, were there any surprises that you uncovered, what you thought?
Well, it was, it was just very challenging to put it together with all the information from very old sources, the railroad to the north, the canal to the south, the property that was conveyed from the original wastewater treatment works that were there, it was just a lot to put together. So, we didn't find anything that was appreciably off, and it all kind of made sense, and we felt good about the south boundary line, because it agrees very closely with the existing DPW building, the property line basically just touches the side of that building, and we were a little fearful that it might not do that, that it might go into the building. You know, obviously, we have to deal with the parking area that extends into the canal property, but buildings are a different kind of creature when you have to go speak with them about that, so. One of the most challenging surveys we've ever done, largely because of the research, but.
Probably had never been properly surveyed.
No.
A lot of it's something new.
We found a, a map that was done by one of my original employers, when, when he was a surveyor for Larson, Bill Larson, who was your village engineer, and actually, back in 1984, he came up with 11.3 acres, which I believe is the 11.3 the county was using.
That's true.
So, it may have been a lot of work for a tenth of an acre, I don't know, but, but I think the, the value of it is that you have a drawing now that's complete, it, it has confirmed boundaries, it also has the occupation that we showed, so the consultant who takes this on can have a, a good base drawing to work from, and, and we don't have to look back.
Well, the other thing that's got is that we now have a good description, so that whatever we do, the deed will list.
Right.
Both descriptions, and that will be the current one.
And it gets us set up for all these next steps.
Yeah, so you have a solid product to work with.
First of all, thank you very much for all your work on this, Scott, I know it's been incredibly complicated with all the different property boundaries and lack of experience. The results are not entirely surprising to me either. I appreciate your help with superimposing the concept map boundaries and everything. If I could have a shape file or, you know, some digital assets from your work, I'd really appreciate it.
Sure.
I'd like to see, for example, where the tenth of the acreage change from like 3 to 11 points to.
Yep, that's, that's fine. I'd be happy to provide everything digitally to you, just like the consultant.
Right.
Well, it looks great, thank you.
No, thanks.
Yeah, and we integrated the aerial into that because we think that adds a lot of value to people who don't deal with maps all the time, as we do.
Visual aids help.
Yes, they do, so, that's my update, how's that?
No, that's, that's helpful, because I know, you know, we have our friends here who want to speak about the arboretum and things that they want to see, and we do have a plan going forward, so that's helpful, I think, to, to frame it that way. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so next up, Margot Fass.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi. Hi, hi. My name is Margot Fass.
Please, please address the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Margot Fass, and I am the founder and CEO of Frackos, and our mission is for advocacy, collaboration, and education, but mainly it's an environmental program for, for sustainability. And I really appreciate that the board is looking at an overall architectural design plan for the arboretum, and so my petition tonight has to do with future planning, perhaps, because, because a lot of us know landscape architecture, architects that could possibly contribute when you put out a request for proposals, but it also has to do with things that could be done right now that are very important for sustainability. And one of them is the removal of Alanthus trees. We took out a whole lot of them before the end of 2020, 2020, I think, I don't know if plants fly so fast, but anyway, that was done, thanks to Zach and Steve, and Steve has been working hard on all of the requirements for the arboretum. Justin did a very good presentation before this year, I think, about considering putting in the gift from a froghouse of a sustainable garden, and I do hope that the board will consider still putting that in. It would be of no extra cost to you, and, and it would be a wonderful educational project, I think, and so I'm going to keep hopping along and peeping.
Stop that.
To let you know what my concerns are, but I'm going to pass this out, I'm sorry, Dorothy, I can get it ready for Monday, by Monday, Justin?
Thank you, Mike.
Renee? Thank you. Mayor Plummer?
Thank you.
Renee?
Thank you.
And my friend Anne, you're welcome.
Okay, so, in last minute fashion, what I did was, was, I'm really an advocate for the Friends of the Arboretum as well, being a friend of the arboretum itself, in my own way. And so, the, the first thing is, I think you ought to know is that I have a petition and not just the back of, of the back page, and it has the map that Justin had prepared for his presentation some months ago, but it also has a somewhat revised petition from before. What you see on the first two pages is just a map he made that I sent out today, and so my website has a whole, whole argument for why it's important to remove the Alanthus trees, mainly because there are hosts where they spotted a lanternfly. And so not only am I asking for a proposal from the Village Arboretum, but also in the Village House Hall, and I wish Bill Smith were here, because I now will need to go to the town board to ask them to do the same. I think that the reason I'm so passionate about Pittsford is I think that we can be a model for, for other communities, I mean, we have wonderful sewage drainage out there, and as an example, Mayor Plummer, you put in a sustainable garden in the back there, I think any efforts that we can make to, to be a point, and people come by a froghouse all the time, and then to the arboretum, and, and to the town, town, here at the Nature Preserve, and so, so I just, people take ideas back, and that's a wonderful thing. So you can read the article if you like on the website, and, but I do want you to look at this last picture on your packet, not, not on the petition, but on your packet, it's in color. So it says that if even a 12-year-old and an 82-year-old can, can work for sustainability, you all recognize somebody, I hope that I'm not going to be cited for some co-author, but anyway, we, we've now increased part of the pollinator pathway by working on sustainable love reading and so forth. So, now as for the petition, I'm going to ask for a deal whether you would prefer to begin into the, into the record, or would you like me to, or how would you like to do that?
It's actually part of the record now.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, we have received it, and it will go right into the record.
Yes, is this the one you've received? Or does it because?
So what you just, will be part of our record, am I correct?
I only have one question for legal counsel, it's not assigned.
Oh, there's nothing, it's, it's just a form that you're showing?
It's what I'll put on my website.
Okay.
The original version has about 50 or 60 signatures, but I didn't promote it, really, I didn't do anything with it.
It'll become part of the record.
But now I'm going to be extending it to requests.
Wonderful.
And does anyone have any questions?
Justin, not for Dr. Cons, but is this, was the original petition the one that we received from legal counsel about, Mayor?
It's possible. It is possible, but we, again, rather than, you know, take up time, because we have a big agenda tonight, we're going to definitely search that offline, and maybe that, you know, we'll get back to you with that. How's that?
So you can't recall if there might have been another petition?
I barely remember what I ate for breakfast, so, you know, we'd have to really go back and look at it.
I do not recall, the only way I would be able to change this now would be compare geometry with my notes on the file.
Right, so we can go back.
I did recall looking into.
Oh, so this is the first time since?
Oh, so this is the first time, and there we go. Okay, then we're all good.
You've never given me a petition prior.
Correct.
Correct.
So that, so now we have the answer.
So there's a different petition that was?
Well, it was similar, but it was different.
Okay, so you would distribute the preversion of the signature previously?
Yeah, but that just didn't go to court, it went up to my family and rabbits and relations.
Okay, all right, I'm just trying to understand what, what's the version we're on.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is it for now.
Okay, we'll, we'll sort, we'll sort it out, okay.
Okay.
I think it's wonderful, we all want to get rid of those horrible Alanthus trees, they're terrible.
Yeah.
The worst, and the spotted lanternfly, the Seneca Park Zoo Society helped us put in the pollinator garden in the back, you know, and we have Alanthus trees in the yard next door, and it was interesting, they're going to put up a, a little, something to monitor and capture them right out here. We were hoping they would get this in over the summer, they have been swamped this summer, but we're hoping to have the whole setup, and then it'd be an educational component for people coming to see the gardens in the village hall to talk about the lanternfly, and they would see.
I believe two weeks has put one under the arboretum, it's one of those little five, or traps of zoo.
It's not in the arboretum.
Oh, it's not in the arboretum?
It's in the town.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, there's a picture of it in the middle one.
Yeah, it's all, it's great, no, so, I mean, we're, we're right there with you.
Okay.
You know, it's all part of best practices for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Speaking of zoo, and speaking of their thermoculture, or the town, Zach, anybody, I really would like to see that thermoculture regarding their zoo.
Well, we're trying to get our next steps and go through our plans, so, you know, I think it's all exciting, so, it's all good. We thank you for your work.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up, June Reeves.
Well, I'm very happy to follow you, Margot and Scott, because they've pretty much covered everything I was going to say. The last time I was here was July 19th, and we were talking about the ARPA funding, and the board had asked for feedback from the community, you know, how those funds should be dispersed and reused for the community, and so I made, I read a statement at that meeting, from, oh, I'm representing Friends of the Arboretum, I'm sorry. Sir Julian and I are here tonight, representing the Friends. I read a statement at that meeting, and I gave all the board members copies. It was an explanation of a rationale for why we believe that the arboretum should receive a significant amount of the ARPA funding. Unfortunately, in the minutes of that meeting, the report that I made related to the rationale for receiving funding was not included in the minutes, and I'm sure that was an oversight.
Actually, it was attached to the back, it was oversight from my attachment to the back.
It was on the back.
It's attached to the end of the minutes, so I didn't have to type all that you already typed.
So typically, that material goes in as, as an addendum, you know, so it is part of it, yeah, so it's original.
It's attached.
It is now.
Yes.
It is now.
Yes, it's up on the website. It was attached. It was delayed through approvals, getting minutes approved. And when I got it up in a rush, I didn't put the attachment in.
Yeah.
No, it's on there.
I was saying, it was an oversight, we know.
Yep, it's on.
At any rate, so it wasn't posted in such a way that people in the community really had access to it. But at any rate, I'm basically here tonight to give just a very brief overview of what we've done in the Friends organization to date, and then to make some requests at the board. Thanks to Scott and Margot, they've kind of covered the ground for me a little bit. But in giving you a little bit of an overview, I would say that we started with 14 members. And I believe I spoke at the first meeting that we were represented, we had 14 people. We now have 94 members of the Friends of the Arboretum. And most of those people are residents of the village. We have professional architects, landscape architects, engineers, master wood craftsmen, arborists, master gardeners, all represented on the Friends of the Arboretum, very dedicated people. Some of the things that we've done to date, we have had work parties in the Arboretum. One of the first things that we did was to try to weed around all of the newly planted trees, because they were being overrun with reeds. We've had six work parties in the Arboretum, dedicated people. We have removed all of the small Alanthus trees in the arbor meadow that had grown back after the cutting. So I was up there just the other day, and it looks pretty clean. So we did that. That was very difficult, all handwork. We had weeding, clearing trails. We have labeled all, almost 200 trees now, and bushes. All of the trees that were planted, all the bushes and trees that were planted are now labeled. And that's, that would be posted temporary Arboretum signs. Unfortunately, many of those signs have been removed. We started with five signs posted in the Arboretum, we now have one. I don't know if people like them. I guess they want to take them home with them and put them in their yards.
Maybe kids go up there, I don't, you know, I don't know.
We had five, and we now have one. So that's been a little bit of a problem. And the last thing that I wanted to mention that we've done so far, we've established an environmental education committee, environmental outreach committee. And that committee will start meeting soon in order to make arbiters in the community, to the schools, and the educational institutions, NASR, Fisher. So now I'm going to just talk a little bit about what we would like to request from the ARPA funding, and I'm aware of the time, too. The, I think it was Margot that mentioned, and also Scott, the master plan. We also would like to see ARPA funding used to develop a comprehensive master plan, development and maintenance plan for the Arboretum. And we have talked to professionals in the field, and have kind of come up with a ballpark figure of around $12,000. That's from talking with professionals in the field, but it's not talking with someone and actually getting specific with this location. We also, thanks to Margot mentioning the invasive Alanthus, we're very supportive of that. It definitely needs to be done, and soon. We have talked again with professionals. We have a figure of $15,000 to $20,000 to remove all the Alanthus trees and the Japanese knotweed, which also needs to be removed. It's not as extensive, it's not as big a job. Took the two of those together would be for $15,000. They're saying $15,000 to $20,000. Sue, do you want to talk a little bit about, if you all have time, one of the reasons it's so important to get rid of the Alanthus, and to do it as soon as possible, is because of the lanternfly infestation. Do you want, well, I'm going to go a little, Sue Julian, 5611, yeah, it's just, they're coming this way, they're in Buffalo now, they're in Syracuse now. I put the Hugh Cornell, I put the spotted lanternfly trap up in the town portion. We didn't get any, but the trap's coming down now, because obviously it's going to be winter, so we don't need it. But it is a very big problem. They feed on the sap from the stems and the leaves, and the trunks of the Alanthus, and they just, they're decimating vineyards and orchards, and so it's a big deal. And so we're asking to try and get these removed as soon as possible, because obviously, you can see the big trees are dropping the seeds, and we've got a whole host of new tree seedlings. And no matter how quickly we remove them, it's not going to do any harm unless we get rid of the big, large trees. So that's why they're asking me to do that as soon as possible. And I know that you're looking at a plan, and, but this, I think that this is more the priority even before the plan.
Yeah, it's really management and stewardship over the property, regardless of what we're doing with the plan. Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, the Alanthus is a problem.
And to help in any way we can help to do that, to accomplish it.
Well, if we could connect, maybe, at some point, let's go over the numbers, and talk with people, you know, because really, everything you're doing is fantastic. Thank you.
And also, in terms of the Alanthus, also, we want to try to do it in the coming season, when they're not actively growing, because they grow at just a phenomenal rate.
It's crazy.
So that was what we would like to request from the ARPA funding, and it comes to around $38,000 ballpark estimate, but it is based on discussing with professionals. And we have just a couple of other things. We also want, like Scott has finished it apparently, we'd like to have a copy of the updated map of the Arboretum. And we know that there's $6,000 allotted for the Arboretum budget, and we would like to request that up to $4,000 of that be used for permanent signage. We tried the temporary, I don't know where they are, but we need permanent signage, and we would like to have, we actually talked with someone, he's actually a master woodcrafter, he's on, he's in the Friends of the Arboretum, he could give us a very good price. And I think we should have signage in the Arboretum, it's time, people don't even know they're there.
Can I speak to that really quickly?
Sure.
So just so you know, we had a lot of discussion about this, about the budget for what the Arboretum should be, and we all agreed it was way too low.
Good.
And what we agreed, though, was that this was a planning year. And so what we were going to do with this year is things like what we just did, which is get plans in place, get a real plan, get seeker done, and then budget the actual work. So I do know that that money, definitely the priority is to use it, but it's also to use it to plan. And so whether we can, whether we can get the sign done this year, or whether that goes into the final project, I don't know. I hear you, but the intent of that money was to plan this thing properly.
Well, we are also, as we said, we're asking for some ARPA funding. And part of the ARPA funding that we were asking for was for a comprehensive plan for the Arboretum. But as Sue said, we know we need signage, and we don't really need a comprehensive plan to tell us that. People don't know they're in the Pittsburgh Village Arboretum. We know that we need those Alanthus trees out of there, and they need to come out this year, or it's just going to be worse. And we had people working in that Arboretum every month, for six months. I have the poison ivy, you can prove it. We all do. And there's only so much we can do. I mean, we can pull, we can pull weeds, we can dig.
I think we're clear on that. No, I do. And I think, you know, I think what you're hearing from all of us, we support this. This is wonderful. This is for our entire community. This is the good stuff.
Thank you.
But it's the stewardship component of the land, you know, while we're doing the planning, and that's so important.
Well, I agree with that.
The erasure of invasives. So I could just finish my thoughts, Sue.
Yes.
But just, you know, the erasure of invasives, because it's not just one and done. As we all know, it's forever to keep up with all of this, so, because then the next bug shows up after the lanternfly, what's next? You know, we know this. So thank you so much, really.
Thank you.
And let's connect offline, and let's get those numbers, and let's really, you know, we can circle back, okay?
For the board, I'll pass it.
Thank you so much.
And we have some donations as well that have been received by the village, specifically for signage.
Yeah, right, yeah. And we have that in a separate fund.
I'm sorry, Lindy, I think, what do you need?
We do have, in a village proper here, donations that have been received specifically for signage, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So that'd be a starting point.
Right, that's a starting point.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you, yes.
I do have comments received from the public.
Okay, so comments, and then I believe Steve wanted to add something as well.
Thank you, Jim.
Could you pass that over to Justin?
Okay, these came in through email this week. I did test the comments before. The first one was from, I believe it's Mike Reynolds. This was read at Thursday. He is my colleague, he writes, January's Sue Pingley, and I want to recommend approval of the items by June Reeves and Sue Julian, they would take only a fraction of the ARPA funds and would be beneficial to the village now and in the future. Sandra Beckman, hello, I'm ready to support the ARPA funds by June Reeves and Sue Julian, residents of the Arboretum. This summer, our Canvigo Rovers hiking group had the pleasure of to tour Macho Springs with a layer of treasures. The village is extremely fortunate to have such an inviting green space for their community supporters. Everything possible should be done to maintain and enhance this space now for the future. ARPA funds are the ideal source to ensure this happens. Friends of the Arboretum, knowledgeable and concerned individuals, have studied the issue to assure that most urgent needs will be addressed through this funding. His residents can stand tall and learn the true funding to exploit our environment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay. I know we, oh, Supervisor Smith is here, I see. But, oh, Steve, I'm sorry, you did have a comment before we close this out.
Here, regarding the Arboretum, there are ways to avoid certain things by not reaching certain thresholds. So if you want to get ahold of me, and we can talk about what the plans are there, I'm not trying to circumvent the code, but there's a ways to do things in sections to not have to go through certain steps in order to make some progress of them.
In more limited areas?
Yes, limited areas. And if they want, you know, me or whatever, and discuss what's going on there, I can, I can work with them to, you know, stay under certain thresholds and accomplish more without having to go.
Before it triggers something else.
You know, for triggering some major review requirements.
Can I ask one more question about the remediation?
Yeah.
Before we move on?
Sure.
I know I did a walkthrough with Tom Bob Corby on the areas of where the Alanthus trees are, and tell me again, what, you're saying this needs to be done this year? Do you mean before the winter, or do you mean sometime in the spring before they?
First before winter. Right. Before the, back in the growing season again.
Okay.
Because it's just better to do them when they're dormant, as dormant as they ever are, because they grow, they grow all the time.
And when they're, when they're not dormant, they send out all these types of food.
Hundreds of rounds.
That's all over the place.
Of course, they do.
That's my venture.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you so much. Thanks for all your good work. Yes.
Frank Ackman, it's 5600, right. Steve, are you just, I just want to be clear, you're suggesting that the steering committee for the Arboretum meet with you to see what we can go forward with?
Yes, and stay under certain thresholds, which require further review, or larger steps.
We'll be contacting you soon. Thank you.
And that's the stewardship and eradication component.
Right.
Yeah, great, nice.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, I have one final question. So at the beginning, I was asking questions about the legal fees on the Arboretum, and one of the items was unauthorized work on the Arboretum. So it seems to me that there are probably a lot of groups who are going in to volunteer and pulling weeds and doing work in the public park. Was this the, was this part of the work that you saw counsel from there?
I think, again, we're going to have to go back and review our notes and look it up, because what has happened, as you know, over time, working with you folks, you know, you let village hall know when you're going to be in the Arboretum, how many people, all of that, which is important, as we, you know, we know. So this probably was prior to us really setting up a policy, you know, policy to make sure we know that folks are in there doing work on what's village property. So that's why, you know, you're letting us know.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I just hope that, since it does sound like we're all on the same page, we all want to get the, have the best result for the Arboretum, and we've got a group of dedicated volunteers looking to help our community, I hope that we're able to just have open discussions with them, instead of having a lot of legal fees to pile up and don't.
Yeah, I think, I think we just had a wonderful open discussion, and we're all appreciative. Thanks so much for that, really.
I think, though, it is important, and important, is that we're going to go in there and work, they call village hall, let them know what's going to happen, so Zaxx on notice, our window's closing off.
And that is something that has been worked out over time, and I think that's probably what we're speaking to right now. Now, Dan, I know you wanted to speak about the open meeting law, but the supervisor's here right now.
Sure, fair enough. I mean, I don't think that's a long thing. We've talked about it ad nauseam. I think it's just a vote.
A vote, we don't have a draft.
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet.
No, it's a direction to have me turn it into a local law.
We would make the motion to direct our attorney to craft, craft that law.
It's on the concerns of last, that we discussed last meeting.
Well, that's pretty simple, right? I'll just propose that we direct the attorney to turn that into something usable. I made a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second roll call, please.
Discussion, please.
Discussion, back to the board.
First of all, I believe that, personally, I stated in the last meeting that I have several concerns about this. It strikes me that, I believe, there are some representatives from the town here, I don't think they have virtual meetings where all the members are able to attend remotely. I don't think that we see the same thing in other local boards, the Board of Education, for example, I don't think he's doing that. I believe that our constituents come here and expect to see us in person, and I think that we have a unique opportunity to do that, and I strongly support at the moment having in-person meetings. Furthermore, we have had a unique circumstance where we have not all been in person, and I want to be able to establish that this is really something that, if we do go down this path, this is really, so that we can serve the public, because that's what we're here for. And I'm not convinced that we are, should have this plan. We've received several comments from the public, some at the last meeting, and perhaps some others at this meeting. Most of those were expressing concern about going to virtual meetings, and I did not see a lot of support, other than once in that trustee Keating distributed to us some support to go in virtual. So based on my own thoughts about being in person and serving the public, based on the public input that we've received, I think that the best decision is to table this topic for right now, and perhaps revisit it in the future when there's different public sentiment and when all of the time has passed.
Thanks for your input.
Just for clarification purposes, we can do virtual, divided the three, the public can be at three places. Everybody could be virtual. If the public has noticed where those three are going to be, then it will all be virtual, except the public has a right to appear at those three locations.
So the public will still have access?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think from our last meeting, what we didn't have agreement on was just asking you to go look at the areas that we had some concerns. We had, we were wondering if we could change the language on that piece about having a quorum all at village hall, if we were allowed to change that language. I think that was one, correct me if I, well, you weren't here, but we talked about having the quorum need to be in the same place.
Yeah.
And then the other one was limitations around.
I don't think you could do, I'm certain you can't do that, you're going to be overriding village, or public officer's law.
The way I understood the law was that as long as there's a quorum in the building.
No. Quorum available to the public is a better way to put it.
Okay. But in all likelihood, that's a quorum available in the public.
Potentially, but a quorum available to the public anywhere.
Right.
Not necessarily here, but always available.
Three different locations.
Is the way I'm understanding that.
It'd be three different locations.
And, you know, I would just like to add that a number of other villages, you know, when I was talking to villages from NICO, are doing this, they're adopting this, because they've invested in the technology. We're looking to upgrade our video facilities in this room, and I think that's a good thing, because it's been a little, little challenging. So I think that- So I think there's the recognition, why this law has been circulated statewide for all the municipalities to review, is that it's a little bit of a different world, you know, we're going into a flu season, COVID's still out there, people could test positive or have a family member who's sick and they don't want to come in to a public space, but nonetheless, they want to have the capability of moving the business of their municipality forward and be able to be present on a video. We would have a smart screen, so you would see, you know, the trustees participating, if they needed to be remote. And I think Renee also raised a good point, that the parameters are fairly, you know, straightforward parameters, it's not that you just, gee, I can't show up, I've gotta hang now, you know, there has to be really more extraordinary circumstances. And I actually think it provides better access, because now we have a better chance of having a quorum and moving the business of the village forward, and having people present, just as we've had all through COVID, Zooming, and trying to, and conducting business, we have that capability now going forward to make sure that we do have a quorum. If people simply can't make it, say they have a sick relative or a sick child, so they can't come in. So I see this really as just a way of expanding access, I don't see this as a deal breaker, because you're not, you can't make it just in person. And I also think, we're a small village, we encourage everybody, come in and see us, call, we always have an opportunity to have face-to-face discussions if you want, here at Village Hall, or certainly can give, call to one of our trustees, if that's how you'd like to reach out. So I think we have plenty of opportunities, and I think really what this, this particular law does, it enables us to keep moving forward and conducting the business of the village. Because if someone's out, can't make the meeting, and then maybe another person's out, then all of a sudden we don't have a quorum. So when we're small, we have to be, I think, a little more nimble, and really look at the technology to help us with this. So that's, that's a thought that I'm having. Yes, Lily?
Thank you. I am in agreement with trustee Keating. I would prefer to table this in any conversations that I have had, and given the amount of time that I've spent with the village now over 28 years. During that time, I've always held as my main principle accessibility and transparency with the constituents, and that lends itself to public face-to-face, in-person meetings, and does not include being at home unless, as we experienced during the pandemic, which I found very challenging, I didn't feel that we were functioning at our, at our best during that time, and I would respectfully ask that we continue a discussion about open meetings law, and what it means to our government, and just as Mayor Plummer pointed out, we are a small municipality, and the key to us has been our accessibility. And I would, but not, I just see that suffer, we're not corporate. You're in a different environment and corporate, I can understand we're Zoom would, would function well in that environment, we're different. We're your government, we are elected officials, and as public servants, we should be accessible, and that does not include sitting in our house because of being somewhere else. If you're committed to being a trustee, and working for this fabulous village for very large salary of $4,000 a year, I think you're committed, and the reason you're here is because you are committed. And that's my speech about open meetings law. And so I hope that someone here also who has taken the time to be with us here this evening in person, which I appreciate so much, if you have something to say about open meetings law, I would love to hear, thank you.
Well, hang on, yes, excuse me, yes, trustee Keating.
I just have a yes/no question for the people on the floor, this is just a yes/no, I don't want details. Have you understood the discussions in private, what my reasons are for wanting to have this option? Justin, yes or no?
I think we're not here to discuss our private conversations, but our public ones with the people who are...
Okay, so, yes or no?
I answered your question, let's do a public discussion.
Okay, Lily, yes or no? Are you clear on what my concerns are?
I'd like to...
I, I'm allowed to ask this question.
Okay, you are, absolutely.
Lily, am I, are you clear on what my concerns are? That I've expressed in private?
Okay.
Elisa, are you clear on what my concerns are?
I am totally clear on your concerns.
Renee, are you clear on what my concerns are?
I am clear, but I don't think this law is gonna cover that, your interpretation of it.
Okay.
I think the law, the law has a larger sort of scope, I think.
Thanks.
And also a narrow parameter in terms of when an elected official doesn't attend a meeting, it's not...
Yeah, and I did have a challenge with that before, like, you said, if they have a hangnail, so if this is allowed by law, then it can be done, there's gonna be no judgment by somebody that says whether that person can attend remotely or not, that, that doesn't make any sense. So listen, we're not voting on this, what we're voting on is whether we want Jeff to put together some language that we could discuss and vote on. So we don't need to have a long conversation about that. The proposal was made to...
To have Jeff.
To have Jeff go draft some language.
And then, you know, when, when, if this does pass, then the, our attorney would bring back this language to the board, and we would certainly, really, at that point, really open up the discussion, you know, we do have our town supervisor here, we were trying to schedule one 15 minutes ago. So we do have a motion, and we do have a second, and we have a comment, I see Dorothea's hand.
And we have some input? Is that why you're raising your hand?
Yes, we're not, we're not voting on a law yet, we don't even have...
We're not voting on a law.
We're voting on whether to give Jeff direction...
Just to direct our attorney.
I understand.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, I have comments from the public that I've received, email, and that will receive previous meeting, and I have three comments bumping up something on the screen right now.
What we've done in the past with the email comments is just included in the package.
I would like to hear the comments.
The first comment received was received for the last meeting, which I was not in attendance, and this item was table. I think person is here in the audience, would she like to read her own comments, or would she like, need to read them, or to read them?
You want me to read them? Of course, I have glasses.
Oh, of course, you do know, yeah, no, that's okay.
To be clear, we're not voting, we're not voting on this.
I take direction from the board, and I go by the...
I mean, we'll all have opportunities to weigh in.
Yeah, you know, well, let's do this, how about this? I'm not gonna read the whole thing, you'll all be able to read it.
We've read it, we've all read it.
I'm gonna be short and sweet.
We've all read it.
Basically just...
Name and address, please.
Oh, yes. Lisa Cove, 44 South Main Street.
Please address the board, thank you.
Lisa Cove, 44 South Main Street, I am a village resident. I wrote along email concerning this. Basically, what that is, is I'm asking that our elected officials show up for us 100%. And there's no, there's no discussion as to whether virtual compared to in-person is not, it's not. I mean, 100% is equal face-to-face, and not just for us, for you. I want to see camaraderie, I want to see expression, I want to see personal connection between my board members. Dan, I understand, we talked, I totally respect you, but you've already said that you were gonna be leaving in March, so maybe, maybe you and Lisa Plummer can decide that if you don't feel comfortable, maybe until you leave, you can stay at home. I mean, I just don't know why we would have to change it for everybody, so that this, this would be, you know...
I didn't understand what you were...
You, you had mentioned on the record that you were gonna be leaving in March. So March is not that far away, so why are we making this whole change when you're feeling more really concerned about this?
Because I have to do work between now and...
Yeah, maybe you're not gonna make...
I think that's, I think that's a different discussion, I really think that's a different discussion, and it's not germane to the specific law that has been distributed to every single municipality in New York State, we are talking about something different.
Okay.
And please, everybody, let's respect that.
Okay, so what I'm saying is...
Understand, this is only a direction to our attorney right now, and I would like to kind of keep things moving.
All right, what I'm saying is I would, I would expect 100% participation and commitment.
Thank you, thanks so much for that, okay, and we did read your comment, thank you. Okay, yes, and we have a couple others.
I have, June Reeves, Dorothea, please show the members of the board my position to allowing members of the board trustees to attend meetings via Zoom unless extraordinary circumstances, we need to be able to see our elected representatives face-to-face during board meetings if all possible. The other comments came from Dan, trustee Keating.
Yeah, we're not voting on it, so we don't need to read it.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Now I have, Jack, the state changes, say this is gonna be Peggy Calaveras. Jack, the state's changes say the new law expires in July 2024, what does that mean?
It's up for consideration in 2024.
Amber, I personally, as a member of the community, understand that there are other things outside a committed job to put others at risk, or where a job is a dead far-fetched, no matter what level of commitment involved, attending things, of meetings over a virtual platform whether a citizen or an official should be absolutely okay.
Who was that?
I have Amber.
Well, we need names and addresses, otherwise...
People, please put your name and address.
Yeah, that's...
We don't have names and addresses, we should not go in the record.
Not going in the record.
Christine, Christine U.A., 5 Stonegate Lane, and Jack has paid all early, and it does not seem like the board is going to be voting in favor of this, I cannot see how it makes sense to spend $100 on this activity.
We didn't say whether the board is gonna vote favorably or unfavorably, we don't know what we're voting on.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I really want to close this out, time is moving on here, one last comment, and then we have a motion and a second, and we're gonna take a vote.
Very common.
See, there's a hand up in the back.
Oh. First trustee, like Evan, first trustee, like Evan, then, hang on one second, hang on, excuse me, one minute, please.
I feel that this is an investment in something that the public has said they are, they are not interested in this job, sure. Furthermore, I have a lot of respect for our attorney's work, I think that there are parts of this law that we have to define, including the notion of extending circumstances for which somebody is allowed to stay at home, and this is a discretionary matter that needs to be decided on by the, by the board, and I don't think that it would be appropriate as a direction to our attorney to have him work on, on such matters.
Great, thank you for that, and yes, name and address, please.
Michael Cash, 5 Stonegate Lane. Thank you, I think I've been talking to you before, during COVID, or whatever you, all that. I'm baffled at the request, I mean, I think that we need complete transparency, and, you know, I don't attend many of these meetings, I may start attending more in the future, but to come to a meeting and have one or two or three board members or the trustees, or whatever you guys are called, and the mayor not be here, I think would be an incredible disservice to the community. I'm gonna, I came here thinking that we were gonna have another issue at 7 o'clock, I have to leave in two minutes, so I'm gonna kind of break your rules, if you'll allow me. I just wanna talk, I'm gonna talk briefly about the, the instruction that's gonna go on 95.
That's coming up.
I know, but I've gotta leave, I've gotta leave, so just give me two seconds.
Excuse me, the, the board has to make a decision, we have a different agenda item.
I understand, I understand.
Thank you, thank you for respecting our procedure.
I understand.
Thank you so much for respecting our procedure, so I'm gonna bring, I'm gonna bring this back to the board, because we have an agenda item, and we have had a motion and a second before us.
I understand.
And so...
I've been here for two and a half hours, and I've got, I'm 30 seconds, give me 30 more seconds.
Hang on one second, I'm bringing this back to the board, I want you to please understand that. Does the board wish to just temporarily just table this motion and listen to our neighbor?
Yeah, with no follow-up, so listen to our neighbor, then come back and vote the issue at hand, and then we'll go to the other one.
Are we comfortable with that, that we will listen and then come back and do the vote?
Of course.
Okay, okay, great, and please, thank you for respecting our procedure.
Thank you, Mr. Plummer.
Okay, okay, great, so 30 seconds then.
I'm concerned, and I may be concerned, you know, unjustly, but I'm concerned about the application of the zoning code, because in reviewing the materials for the structure that's being built at the town facility, there's discussion that it may not be subject to the zoning code, or that the zoning code may not be applied. I personally believe that for, for the village, not to apply the zoning code to anything that gets constructed in the village, and we have a complex village, it's small, we all love it, but to not apply the zoning code to anything that's constructed in the village, I think would be a big mistake. We have, you know, residential next to commercial, next to schools, next to public facilities, and if we're gonna have consistency and continuity, and everybody's gonna be happy and live together, I think that zoning code needs to be applied, and if, you know, then we don't have to worry about 30-foot structures in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for waiting, I appreciate it. Okay, so now we're back, we have a motion on the table, can we just have the motion restated, please? Just because we, time has passed, so the motion is, Dorothea, to restate the, well, the motion was to direct our attorney...
Direct the attorney to look at a local law.
To draft a local law, to bring it back to the board, to have additional community input, it is nothing more than that, it is a direction. And we did have a second, I'd like to have a roll call, please.
I would like to, first of all, ask, I think that all of us have expressed our opinions on this, other than the casting of a vote, except for trustee Spencer, and I would like to hear your comments first, before justice.
Way to put me on the spot.
Well, did you want to weigh in or not?
That's fine, I weighed in. The last meeting, I was pretty clear that there were some things that I had some questions on, that I thought we could tighten up the language a bit, because I hear that one of the concerns is that somehow, and I don't believe the intent of this draft legislation, or giving the, you know, the state giving us each municipality the opportunity to do this, the intent is not that someone would solely take meetings from, from home or from wherever they are remotely, I mean, the intent is so that if an emergency happens, someone would be able to, to take it remotely. And some of the, the language is a little loose right now, and we all thought that originally three people needed to be at Village Hall, and it sounds like that's not the case either, to have a quorum all in the same place at Village Hall, allowing the villagers to come in, so getting some clarity on how it could be firmed up, but it sounds like, I mean, the main question is, do we want to give our board the opportunity, if they were sick, if they were caring for somebody in an emergency situation, to be able to still participate in the meeting? And it sounds like we don't want, it sounds like much of the board doesn't want that, much of the public doesn't want that. So if you are sick, or if I'm taking care of my mother down in North Carolina, because she had surgery, it sounds like you would prefer I wasn't here at all, than the opportunity to, to call in and participate remotely, that's what I'm hearing.
Don't you call in, or...
No, no, no.
You don't have a meeting if there aren't five...
No, I want everybody to understand, when we were Zooming, you know, during COVID, that was an executive order that was issued by the governor of New York State, that order has been rescinded, and the response from municipalities across the state to Albany was, times have changed, we, we would like to have the option of something like this, some type of, at least an opportunity, if there is illness, for example, as Renee was just giving an example of a family member, where, where someone, you know, who was an elected official could still participate and help to, one, create a quorum and move the village or municipality's business forward. So there's no more executive order in place.
So the Zoom originally was, you see everybody's picture, and you see who's here. And then, right now, you have no idea who's in the room, and it's everybody's blank unless you speak. And so, so, I mean, it was so refreshing to be able to come up and talk to each of you individually and, and address my colleagues.
Okay, understood, so, so just very quickly, we're looking to upgrade, and it has been in our budget to upgrade the technology in our room, we would have a smart screen, you would be able to not only hear, but see.
Can we just get to the vote?
See, so, yeah, we have a vote, we have a second, or a motion and a second, roll call.
Trustee like you.
No.
Trustee like you.
No.
Trustee Spencer.
No.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
I would vote aye, just to get the legislation.
Motion passed.
Okay, so we're moving on, thanks, everybody, for your input. Next up, Supervisor Smith is, oh, Paul's here too, hi.
I'll need a minute, please.
Yeah, we're gonna need a minute, should we have just a brief recess, maybe just like a five-minute, just so we can set up for a presentation, and make a motion to recess for five minutes, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Roll call, please. Okay, oh, it's funny music, y'all. Are we recording?
Okay. Now we're still recording.
Okay, I make a motion to call the meeting back to order. We have a forum.
Oh, there's one.
Okay, we're, I know, we're sort of on the side.
I know. Oh, Dan, something I can.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Trustee Langke.
Aye.
Trustee like you.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion yes.
Okay, well, I'd love to welcome supervisor Smith this evening. Thank you. And Paul Schenkel, thank you for being here as well.
Spencer's in the back.
Oh, it's Spencer. Hi, Spencer. Hi, good to see you. Okay, so we have a PowerPoint presentation, and this is about the pavilion at the Spiegel Center.
So it is, yes. And thank you, Mayor Plummer and trustees, for including me in reading tonight. And in where this all derives from is in recent months, I've spoken from time to time with the mayor about two projects the town has proposed for, that would take place in town facilities that are located within the village. I've provided drawings of both plans with the intent of getting feedback and suggestions or comments or concerns from really whatever people within the village government feel that they need to comment on this and hopefully be able to accommodate those questions and concerns. So let me begin with the first one. In recent years, the town recreation center has erected a 20-by-40 tent up in one corner of the property in back of the Spiegels. It's been up basically for the spring, through the fall. And the town won a CBBG grant from federal government, it's administered through the state, it's all federally federal, to erect on that spot for the reasons that we need the tent, an open-air pavilion. And I've provided the drawings, the concept drawings for the pavilion that the town plans to erect there. This is architecturally almost identical to the type of pavilion that we have down in the canal side park where the Friday night concerts are held. This will be a little bit, a little bit bigger. The tent was 20 by 40, the pavilion is going to be 24 by 36, so a slightly bigger square foot, not by much. And that's, that's one rendition, one angle. You can go to the next slide if you can direct there. Again, another, another example of what this will look like once it's done. You can go to the next one. Again, from the, from the inside, so substantially similar to what we have down at the, at the canal. And really, to be, mostly to be used for the senior center lunches. This was something that I think the tent derived from COVID. And when they moved, they were able to sort of start easing back into things and could put the lunches outside where it made more sense. But that was derivation of the tent and everybody loved it, so it evolved into the idea of the pavilion. Now, the next slide should show the layout, yes, but this shows you where this would be, this would be built. You can see the footprint for the pavilion back there in the corner, halfway between the parking lot and the, a little closer to the parking lot. There would be a walkway that came up from the existing sidewalk behind the Spiegel Center that would go up to the, to the pavilion. And, you know, as I've, as I've said before, we welcome input and comments from, from the village board, whether it's any of the boards or any of you associated with village government who has a point of view on this. We are under a certain amount of time pressure for this. This is, the grant that we got requires that this construction be completed by December 31st of this year, or we lose the grant. So to the extent that there's time sensitivity upon any of this, it applies to this particular project. And do we wait for questions or do we actually go through both or do project by project?
Might make more sense to do project by project, I think, just because, you know, it's a kind of closeout one before going to the other.
It does, I agree, okay.
Potentially, you know. You know, as you were saying, this, this is a quick comment from me. I was thinking during COVID, you know, this is sort of the genesis coming out of COVID and how do we make sure we're safe and outdoors was a safer way to be. And we went through this with outdoor seating in our village, you know? And now we have, you know, like the Collins Pavilion, you know, and we're seeing that these usages are helpful, so.
I think we've seen a lot of examples of things where adaptations out of necessity during COVID, the people thought, gee, I like this idea, or it's a good idea and it works well. This really, this sort of fills in that category.
Yeah. And so primarily for seniors, but it could be used for other events potentially. Okay, okay. Yes, Lily.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I had to go back to, in the beginning, you said that you had sent this information to the, to the village board prior to this evening for our review and our comment?
I've discussed this on several occasions with Mayor Plummer and on occasion have given her copies of the drawings.
Conceptual drawings, yeah. And now this is the final.
Well, the beef I mentioned is that considering, as you were saying, rent or hire constraint, and we would appreciate it being able to involve village residents and hear their input. I know that we're, you know, not necessarily looking at it for approval because of the difference between municipalities, but I think that it would have, I would appreciate being in that dialogue with our residents, particularly those on Stonegate, and that concerns about any construction nearing the, the information say would like to have heard it. Unfortunately, this is the first, from our path, this is the first I've heard or any information about this.
Could I, could I speak to that? Bill, didn't you, you know, this has been a project in the town and has been discussed at the town level and made avail, open to residents and?
Yes, yes.
You know, this has been ongoing with the town in terms of it being, people know about these projects.
Yeah, it is not.
Whether you're in the town or the village, you know.
This is something that, because of the various stages that we had to go through in connection with the grant, vote towards application, and also for accepting it and signing the agreement to the terms of the grant, this has been, there have been hearings that was voted on by the village board, or the town board, rather, on, as to several aspects of it over time.
In public meetings.
In public meetings, oh, yeah, it has to be.
So, you know, this has been working its way through the town and we all have access as well. Yeah. Yep.
I'd like to, you know, Mayor Plummer, you said that you received the conceptual plans. How long have you been aware of this?
I think it's probably since last month, maybe. Like, you know, I mean, and so now we're seeing the final plan. Now, now the crunch is, yeah, they are under a timeframe for a grant, but I think Lily made a good point. We do not have the jurisdiction over this because of the, and Jeff, you could speak to that, the uniform.
If I could just interrupt for a second. Jurisdiction or none, I'm here because we, the town, want to hear what those of you with responsibility for village government and village residents have to say about this. And it is true that we are on a timeframe here, but to the extent that suggestions that are practical to be accommodated without, you know, blowing the budget under the grant to be accommodated, we want to know that. That's why I'm here.
Still here for input.
If I could just push this a step further to reach out in timeline. So we see in the packet that there's a design that looks very much from CCL, also the town park, and we want to know on that. I'm, and walking back out to the Spiegel Center, I see fencing at this point, and it seems that there's a pop truck whose name on the fencing is, so it seems like the design was created and could be accepted and went out to bid already.
Correct.
And I'm just wondering, is there a date for groundbreaking? What timeline is it going to be on?
Well, the groundbreaking itself is imminent because it hasn't occurred already. It has to be in order to get this completed.
So that goes to my, so at this point, have we reached out to any of the neighbors in the adjacent properties?
To my knowledge, the town has not, because really, we have viewed this as simply something that is going in place of a tent that people are already accustomed to. It's not as though it's going to involve floodlights or anything that people have not already been accustomed to. It's just that it will be there year-round, whereas the tent is simply seasonal, spring and fall.
Okay, so just to be perfectly clear, and correct me if I'm being wrong, but it sounds like the mayor received the plans at least a month ago. We read architectural plans, we, the town has set those out to bid, they've been a bit accepted, and the construction is imminent. Do we really have any, and residents, adjacent residents, not notified? So it sounds like this is really a done deal. Is this really outreach to feedback? And what's the latitude, what's the ability for us to, that being from?
Okay, it would depend on the nature of the suggestions that may be launched or may be suggested. But to the extent that there are suggestions, obviously, and, I mean, we had to break ground in the fore. So moving the footprint is not going to be something to be accommodated. As I said, it's on the same footprint where the tent has stood in recent years. But to the extent practicable, something can be accommodated. That's why we wanted to reach out to the village.
And the tent, tent has been sort of being put up and taken down for a couple of years now?
Yes, it's been a few years.
Have you received a lot of complaints then about this?
No, we've received.
Oh, okay.
I like it.
Well, we'll take care of this in a minute.
So things like lighting and things like that, those are minor changes that could be made if, for some reason, in looking at this, it was, I mean, I know, if the building permits and everything, we'll make sure that the lighting is compatible so that it's not shining in the neighbors' eyes and things like that.
Right, exactly.
There's an opportunity for some small tweaks if the, if some of the neighborhood might, might force it.
Yes. Again, that's why we wanted to hear from the villagers on this, this project.
We appreciate that. Everything is fine. Yes.
Yes, I do appreciate you coming here. I appreciate the plans. I don't have thematic suggestions or concerns about this. It might be a great project. I am deeply concerned about the process that we're following. It seems that this directly lies on the basis of the foundation. It seems that this directly lies on the base of the framework in compounds. And this is not just a new thing, a community village and town specific. And this seems like, you know, my, my concern is that this doesn't seem like a new thing. But back in 2017, when I was just starting to be involved in the local government, there was a plan by the town to give Hartwood, one of the last remaining green space fields in Metairie Village. And a bunch of the neighbors had some concerns about that. And some showed up and had extensive concerns. And there was truly nothing to be done there. It was a genocide plan, a public tour. And the town was basically just working ahead and implementing this plan without any review authority from, from the village to be restricted. And my specific concern is that this, this seems to be a repeating pattern where village residents are really not given any opportunity for meaningful input when they might have concerns. And maybe they don't. Maybe this project is where it starts, everyone's concerned. But this, this pattern receives two different concerns.
Well, I, I, I have, I have two responses to that, which are both relevant. One is, we wouldn't be here, and I would not have discussed this with the mayor, and I would not have furnished the concept drawings had it not been for an interest, even though the formal review procedures are not legally required. It's a baseline, that's a minimum. We wanted, we wanted to know what people responsible for the village and people who live in the village think about this. And I realize that my arrival here is late in the day. But nevertheless, that's the intention with which we move forward with this. And you'll see I'm giving you a much larger timeframe on the, the next project we'll be talking about in a few minutes. And I don't want to dwell on 2017, it's past history. Everybody loves the community center since its renovation. It was, I was one of the people who was very deeply concerned about the configuration of parking lot that was necessitated by the renovations to the Spiegel Center. Not only was there a site plan, but we had, I think we went through four different iterations where we tried, we had drawings done up.
I was part of that.
To, to try and shut, to try and see if we could do anything other with that proposed parking than we did. And in each case, they were, they were displayed to the public. In each case, the engineers and the people responsible for the event can say, you cannot, you cannot get away with this. You will not have enough parking lot. And so we, there were site plans, they were presented. Again, a kick down in practical consideration.
Yeah, I'd like to just add something as well. You know, the, the Spiegel Community Center is on town property, but we all love it and we all use it as villagers. This serves the entire community, not just the town. It just, it serves the village as well. We have many seniors here in our village that love the programs at the center and are looking forward to this pavilion. And probably some of the little kids in the programs too, you know, where they can be outside and doing crafts and things like that. So I see this as just a wonderful, a wonderful collaboration between town and village. I mean, I, you know, I think we've had a wonderful working relationship. Phil's really been supportive of me in my first 18 months in office and going forward. And I don't think this lies in the face of anything. I think this is how we work together and we, we hammer some things out and maybe you get a little feedback that you can incorporate, you know. So I think this is for the public good. Yeah. All right, put your hand up when you just move it around.
No, I don't want to send the question.
Well, I mean, unless the board members, is Renee Renee, would you like to add anything else to that at this point? Okay. Okay, name and address, please, for the record.
Our period is 70th Street, State Street, Village President. Real quickly, not the most specific of your causes. It is not supervisor. But isn't it just normal matter of fact that applications are proposed such as this normally the multiple to the recent property? Do you have any thoughts?
I think, I think this was sufficiently de minimis because of what it is. I think that would be not necessary.
And, and secondly, real quickly, with this time, if you're trying not now to any consent for the adjacent continued property which is a person and a senior.
There's, there's certainly an opportunity to present it to them. And again, it would depend on the nature of what suggestions may, may be made for modifications or changes, just whether they be practical or is that convenient?
Yes. Name and address, please.
For that, link at him. So you said that, so my question, I have the, for the first center, I mean, the entire project has been completely done.
It must be completed by December.
Lighting and everything has to be completely done.
Otherwise, it was.
Okay. I just want to know if it was the whole project or just a part of it underway?
No, it was all due.
And that, and that's not unusual when you receive grant funding if there's a deadline. They want to make sure that the money that they've given to whatever the municipality is, we all know, is that, you know, it's used and the project's completed so that it can be turned over to the community for, you know, for public use. Yeah.
Okay. I just have one more.
Oh, yeah, okay.
The sidewalk, the way that it curves like that, is it, would it be, is there a reason for curving it? Is there a length there or?
And so there would be access from the car park directly as well as from the Spiegel itself.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Do I have the others?
I have comments.
Okay.
I have two that gave you an email. Hello.
Do we have a name and, a name and address?
So Stonegate.
Okay, okay.
Hello, I live across from your representative on Stonegate. There was a renovation interruption about to start. Obviously, I would like to know what is happening with the support of the student, the new process being applied. And a minute ago, I hope that they are not getting more less. Susan, see, what is Stonegate leaning? Sorry? We've got that listing.
Yeah, I wish.
Oh, and a shelf? Sure. Since this affects surrounding home, should this be up for discretion? Maybe a random, the noise from activities is tolerable, but is usually in the center, closer to the main building. This keeps most of the noise down. The size of structure is frightening. We hurt open spaces, especially near the back fence. Let's break the impact, residents on the street. Village residents really like some input, which you still can do before a big mistake is made. We were given no information, which makes us a bit shady.
Any other?
Yes.
Okay.
I have taken care of where she would give me her address for East Jefferson.
Something.
Thank you, anyone's off to me.
Zach knows every address in the village.
Will this be reviewed by the village planning board? And is concerned or is surrounding residents will be adversely affected by the roofed structure or the team? Certainly, the team is together. Second, persons together, do the residents know about this? Then Christine Muley, five stoney lane. My concern is that even with temporary structures, the activities that occur in the back part of the rec center can be extremely volatile with no consideration for those whose homes border the property. Creating a permanent structure like this invites more activity, concerts, etc. On the flip side, I'm in favor of bringing the sidewalk through the property because it increases the walkability in the village. Continue, is there any way to adjust the microphone? There's no feedback coming through. No, I'm sorry, my technology is very piece of notes, so.
We're going for an upgrade.
I need an upgrade. Yeah, okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Excuse me one second. I think trustee steps ahead.
One more question and question. The building permit, is that issued by the village or the town?
Town.
Town, okay.
Goes through the town.
That's right. Sorry supervisor. That's okay.
I don't care who answers.
If there are no other questions at the moment about this, I'd like to talk about the second project that we've been, but just a minute. Did you have a question?
No, no, I was planning.
Okay. Let me go to the next slide. This is something that we are planning to do, to build in the next year. And we're calling it, for lack of original concepts, Copper Beach Park Two Wingo. And this could involve the grassy area that Charlie Clonton sells hot dogs on now. And just so there's no, not to strike a note of alarm at the outset, Charlie will still be able to sell hot dogs if we do what we are proposing to do. As you know, the old Copper Beach had to be taken down in what has been for years called Copper Beach Park in State Street. And we were able to cultivate saplings from that, from the healthy parts of the tree before the tree became too diseased. And so we had a number of, we had a number of Copper Beach saplings that we distributed to people who were on the town. I asked for them. One of them, among the first, we planted in that lot next to the North Main Street entrance to the library parking lot. And some people talked to us about, well, why don't you think about jazzing this up a little bit more? So we, if you can go to the next slide. We brought Sue Steele, who did the design for our nature preserve, and to present us with some concepts. And there was a concept she presented us. I'm, I'm sorry that the visibility of that doesn't seem to be so good on the, on the screen.
Oh, yeah.
She's making it tinier.
Here.
So on the, the, to the left of that is North Main Street, where you see the car at the top. That is the drive that goes into the library car park. And basically, there would be an area there for people to sit. There would be a chess table out there. The area to the left of where the car is, the top, sort of rectangular, light rectangular area, that would be where a food truck could go. And the idea is that would still be visible from the, from North Main Street. There would be in the lower right of the rectangle that represents the entire parcel, there'd be a small building there for some storage. And what you see in the center, again, just underneath that white car at the top that runs up and down, would be a, a trellis area that can provide shade, natural shade with, whether it was steeria or some other plants that would grow. Yes. Grow on the top. So this is the basic concept drawing. As I said, we haven't been too original in thinking about a name for this. It is a copper beach. I know when, in Britain, when Scotland Yard moved, in a stroke of great originality, they named the new building New Scotland Yard. So maybe, maybe this will be New Copper Beach Park. But unless somebody else comes up with a better idea.
Hard to.
But I think it would be a very attractive landscaping to what is, what is now just a fairly bare and not necessarily always attractive little parcel of land and another copper park for people to be able to enjoy in the village. The next slide shows it from a, from a different, different angle. There you can see, again, you're looking at it here from the, from the perspective of the drive that goes from North Main, which is right into the library parking lot at the left. There is a food truck. You can see the, the trellis work that would provide shade and the little storage building that would be, would be in the back. So there will be more detailed drawings that will come over time. But again, even though we know that this does not have to go through the formal, formal processes, we want to know what the village thinks. I mean, there, there's no point in doing this if the village isn't aboard with it and if you don't think it's a good idea or we don't incorporate your thoughts and concerns in the plan. So I don't, we don't have a fixed timeframe. It's not like we're starting, we're not on the same grid of the street we are with the other project. This is something for next year.
Okay, so I'm asking for, for friends in the room. Do we have natives and pollinators in the planet? Asking for a friend.
Oh, ample room for, for that, for that kind of plan.
It's a good thing.
And we are obviously leaning both towards the answers.
Great.
So, Phil, I was, I was on the planning board when you reviewed the plans for the North West Copper Park, which I'm trying to upgrade. In, in that instance, the town applied for a site plan and did that review on the planning board. Do you know that at this time?
I'll defer to the town attorney as to whether we're going to take mention.
I think we need to have our own board discussion. It sounds like, you know, as I've mentioned, there's a pattern that is very concerning to me. My legal opinion from, from what I heard is not necessarily the same to towns, which gets that they might not be subject to any jurisdiction. I prefer this to be much more collaborative. But I, you know, I do have a lot of personal concerns about the lack of input. You know, the fact that we're coming to make the eleven hour on a Google's Friday, this, this does not seem to be a great cooperative process for the town.
Well, it, it's our policy to cooperate with the village on things just like this. And that's why I'm here tonight and that's why I've shared the information I have shared with the village a while before now. And again, we invite your comments, we invite your input. You don't have to be here, but the idea of not being here and talking with you simply wouldn't occur to me in the first place. So that's why we're here tonight.
Appreciate that. I, well, I think it was, I noticed, we had talked about this like years ago, between the original Copper Beach Park and then now this was activated to where you're looking at.
Yes, and that will be the next slide.
Oh, okay. Because I, I hope we're going in the same direction.
Right. So there up at the, up at the top is the proposed new Copper Beach Park. And there you can see, within that green area, the proposed walkway. And this is one of the things that was discussed, I think, at the village comprehensive planning process of doing something like this. The original idea called for it to go, I think, all the way back to the edge of the canal. But this at least carries it along to the new Copper Beach Park.
So there's a way of, again, of connecting these green spaces.
That's right.
In a safe manner for, you know, wayfinding, walking, you know. Okay.
That's right. And there will be green spaces around it. And, and again, the details of that, as any details of the park are subject to hearing from, from you all.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Bill. Since time is not as critical, I'm understanding this portion of what of your presentation, that, and I understand that correctly.
You do.
You've got a little bit larger window here.
Yes.
I would like to respectfully ask the board to consider having a meeting or adding it to our agenda with these specific plans that are now in, um, presented this evening so that it could be an agenda item that all the villagers can see in the packet and know that it's on the agenda and comes in the state. You're seeing a little information. We didn't have the information.
That's a great idea, yeah.
Which is nice for them to be aware of what was being discussed.
That's true.
So once, if we could apply it to that, I'm sure we would have interested villagers who would like to come and, you know, give their, and see what the town is planning.
That would be a very welcome idea for us to answer.
And I certainly would be happy to come.
Good, okay. Any other questions about this?
What about dogs? Like, will there be water for dogs? Some, you know, some places will have like.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I talked about that.
I know, way bad, way bad.
Yeah, yeah, we, we will be able to have a provision so that there will be a water fountain. And I know you've seen these elsewhere, right at the bottom, there was a doggy park.
Yeah, we're, we're dog friendly.
I know you're considering Hot Dog Park or is that one out?
I, I, I don't know, maybe Charlie over tires some others.
We're looking at it, we're going. Yeah.
But the suggestions on this line to be welcome. But there, no other question, but thank you once again.
Thank you so much.
For giving me some time and having me here. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks so much, Bill. And thanks, thanks also to Paul for the sense of agreeing here, too. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can move that forward.
So we'll coordinate so that we can get a picture of your actual date for, I would put.
Yeah, we'll coordinate that. We'll get, we'll, we'll get this more information and pull that together. It's, it's great because we have a return.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Really nice.
Do you need another five minutes to try to undo this?
No.
You're good, okay, just wait. Okay, thank you.
What's that? Yes. Oh, yes. Good, special permit.
I know, that's the, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
We're fancy. Are we, are we ready to go?
Good.
Okay, we're bringing it back to the next agenda item, please.
On the previous item, I know there's some people left. Given my concerns on that, I will let down the attorney finance session. I understand we have people here who may be interested in other items, so we defer that until later in meetings. But I think there was time to make sure to discuss those.
Yeah, we actually are going to be asking for an executive session for two, two other items, that one of them pertains to another agenda item, so we can probably wrap everything as.
You gotta come out.
We have to go back, yeah.
You gotta come out.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't have to do anything in the attorney finance session, but you have to go in and out of the executive.
Yes. That's right, you're right. I'm cross pollinating the two. Okay. Next up, the public hearing, a special permit for 19th State Street.
Hello, how are you? I'm good, how are you? 19th State Street. I am requesting a special permit for a hair salon and boutique in 19th State Street. It was previously a hair salon as well, before us.
Okay, we all, we all have copies of the permit.
I do.
Okay, were there any questions for our applicant this evening? And thank you for waiting, it's been, yeah.
I'm learning a lot. Very interesting.
We were here last meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, exactly. So Eddie, Eddie, I want to clarify, at this property, you have your own parking.
Yes.
A salon existed in this location previously?
Correct.
And your hours of operation are?
Eight AM to 8 PM Tuesday and Saturday.
Okay. And your trash collection is by dumpster or?
Yeah, located in the back.
And it's by tote or by dump?
Um, they have a recycling dumpster and a regular dumpster that will be picked up every week and removed promptly from us.
And how many chairs will you be operating out of?
We, currently, there's three of us.
Okay.
With room for five or six.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any other, any other questions here? Thomas?
Thank you for waiting.
I'm learning a lot, I really am, this is new for me.
Remember the John moment?
Yeah.
It's a tiny village, but I love it.
It looks like Christmas at my house outside, everything's good.
So, wait, can I make a motion to open the public hearing? Yep.
Okay, I mean, I, I make a motion to open the public hearing.
One and second. We're just catching up. Okay, trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Trustee Laffier?
Aye.
Trustee Spencer?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, the, the public hearing is open. Is there anybody wishing to speak from the public on this application? Okay. Anybody online, any, any comments or input? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved, okay, vocal.
Wait, my second thing, was that a second? You said that you entertain a motion.
Oh, I'm only entertaining. Okay, so we need a second.
A second.
Okay. Okay, vocal.
Trustee Spencer?
Aye.
Trustee Laffier?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I will make a motion that we approve the special use permit requested by Gina Oden for 19th State Street, the Village of Pittsburgh, for a hair salon and boutique in that location.
I will second.
Vocal, please.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Trustee Laffier?
Aye.
Trustee Spencer?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Good luck with your year.
We're very excited.
All that waiting and it was two minutes.
I know, but thank you so much.
Okay, have a good evening. Okay, next up, well, we do want to, I do want to have, have us go into an executive session, this is regarding the RFP for South Street, actually Anne Wood Street. So I would like to make a motion to discuss a proposed property acquisition and also an employment matter pursuant to 105 of the Public Officers Law.
I would respectfully request that the board defer this meeting, this particular executive session, till the end of our meeting this evening, because we have a number of residents in the, here this evening who are.
Okay.
Given that it's not time sensitive and that.
Yeah, so why don't we table that for now? Because you're still here and you want to speak on some of the agenda. Yep.
That would be great, thank you very much.
Okay, so what, I, I will table that, is that the appropriate, how do we do this? Second and then tabled, what do we do?
Yeah, table. Was it seconded?
Was it seconded, so we can table? We're tabling, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let's see, next up, well, why don't we go then right to the short term rule, because we know people want to speak to this. And also, it's, it's really not a public hearing tonight, the short term rental legislation. The outcome of the last sort of workshop on this was that we would sort of get, you know, do some research, get some different samples of legislation that were available online and also in our packets. I know I came forth, but Lily gave some stuff, too. So it's really more just kind of pulling things together, because obviously, we don't have this legislation at all in our village, so it's not an overnight process. We need to, you know, really do the research and again, get public input as we go along. So with that being said, we had.
I did, I think the place that I would appreciate beginning is to hear from the residents we've got, if there are any who have come to speak on the subject. And I'd like to hear that first.
Okay, so board in agreement, you guys, back to the board? Okay, Renee? Yep, sounds good. Anybody wishing to pipe up? You know, we had some of the legislation posted online, so if you had a chance to take a look at that, it's an input.
Justine.
Yeah, come on in. Sure, name and address, please.
Tori Panett, Lincoln Avenue. I want to talk about kind of a different perspective, but it's only popped in my head about this. I want to talk about the impact short term rentals will have on the quality of village voters. How will it impact our voters? So today, there are approximately 700 residential village units. Eighty, 189 are long term rentals. That means 27% of our residential village units are short, are long term rentals. Adding 75 Monroe and 160 more long term rentals, bringing the total to 349 long term rentals. Basically, 41% of our village will be long term rentals. And as of September 15th of this year, we have 1,025 registered voters. March of 2021, we had 429 voters come out for our election. Plummer, she had 222 votes. Corby had 207, a difference of 15 votes. Had only eight voters voted for Corby, the election would have gone to him. Converting long term rentals and private homes to short term rentals decreased registered voters and decreased the number of people who might care about the village's long term goals. With such an already small community of voters, loss of voters may have a significant impact. Neighbors and a sense of community will also be lost. There is a short term rental on my street, Lincoln Avenue. That home's long term renters over the last six years have participated in community events and even hosted porch parties, village porch parties. With short term rentals, we will not see any community involvement, but empty houses most of the year. Thank you for hanging out, I really appreciate it.
And thank you for waiting.
Just a different perspective.
Really appreciate your input, thank you. Anybody else wishing to give someone a foot, yeah?
John Lubeck, 62th State Street. And I know we talked about this a couple of weeks ago. And what I'm afraid of is I don't want to see the village rush into a public hearing and an eventual local law prematurely. I think that as a village, we don't understand all of the pros and cons that are associated with short term rentals. And you've got regulatory agencies and authorities across the state are debating and defining short term rentals in the same context we are as a village. And right now, the village already recognizes different types of residencies, such as B&amp;Bs. We've got boutique hotels and inns. And to dismiss the impacts of short term rentals by simply stating that there is no difference between short and long term rentals, I think that's reckless at best. The better course of action would be to engage a citizen advisory board or a committee to thoroughly review all of the pros and cons of short term rentals, because there are some benefits to them, but I think you've got to look at everything together. We want to make sure that there's linkage with the comprehensive plan. What's the town doing? You know, what are other communities around us, what's they're doing? To make sure that we're not out there on the edge of something where we don't belong. And I, I think everything that we're trying to accomplish here is to maintain a high quality of life for village residents, as opposed to simply a tenant coming in for the weekend. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Just your input, yeah. Anything else?
Eddie, our peer 70th State Street Village resident. First of all, I'd like to thank the peer speaker, very interesting, unique and poignant perspective presented by a village resident, which I haven't heard to date. Thank you for the stats and the perspective. A key matter of concern, obviously, regarding short term rentals is whether or not a highly call, a high quality of residential life and village-wide sense of community can exist will be maintained with the introduction of underregulated, non-owner occupied, short term residential rentals. I trust all would agree that the greater number of owner occupied residential properties, the greater the quality of life for both individual village residents and village community at large. Conversely, that with each and every conversion of a village owner occupied residential property to either a non-village resident owner or non-owner occupied property, the quality of life of the village residential, quality of life, the overall village-wide sense of community is definitely diminished. And all the more so for those village residential property owners whose home is located within the immediate vicinity of a non-owner occupied property. It should be noted for the record that the short term rentals such as Airbnb, VRBOs, et cetera, have met many similar characteristics of B&amp;Bs, boutique hotels and inns, all three of which are regulated under the Village of Pittsburgh zoning code. Is not an Airbnb, in fact, commercial business by both definition and fortune. I correctly believe that it is, and if you receive why it is commercial. Furthermore, it's more important to note that per section 210-214 news list of the Village zoning code, quote unquote, "In order to protect the residential character for the district in which it is located, a bed and breakfast B&amp;B facility shall be regulated by the following. I repeat, protect the residential character." And once again, it had these, basically Airbnb sharecan rentals in essence, the same as B&amp;Bs which are regulated. When they would not, why then would there not be some regulation of non-owner occupied or non-village residential short term properties, which are in essence the same? With that said, it's critical that the village board, village trustees must not rush the discussion, rush the judgment, or on a matter until after completion of serious deliberative comprehensive view of the zoning code, along with the village residents' input on this matter of short term rentals, a matter which will have both immediate and decades-long impact on both the quality of life and the hobby that a small village resident presents community. In brief, and it's always critical that the village pause, take the time and effort with village-wide residents' input to review in greater detail both current village code deficiencies as it addresses, but does not currently address short term rentals, such as Airbnb, et cetera. Just as the trustees saw the need to have a matter of whether or not to allow cannabis dispensaries and/or lounges decided by the village residents at large, based on the consideration that the village residents should not, should have a direct savings zoning matter which would affect their quality of life, I trust that all would agree that the vast majority of village residents, of which I understand the majority are owner occupied residential property owners, would say that the village residents should have a say, that the decision should be determined by the village residents at large, either by referendum or village committee comprising village residents. Furthermore, that the vast majority of village residents would say that the impact of short term residential properties on the quality of life of residential property owners would be greater than the impact of cannabis dispensaries or lounges. Once again, an item which the trustees saw the need to leave the final decision up to the village residents. Thank you very much. I might speak too fast, but I wanted to get another three minutes.
You got it all.
You know the three minutes.
But I do.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for the good input, appreciate it. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Somebody already spoke, yep. Oh.
Yeah. Thanks. So I'm Larry, I live at 59th State Street, the village. And I don't have anything new to say, I just want to echo the comments that were previously made this evening, like if there were, I think you could see from the village citizen's standpoint, standpoints, there are a lot of issues surrounding this topic. And I would urge the village to take its time and thoroughly study this issue. I don't think it wants to be at the lead. One point that I think is extremely important is that the village coordinated efforts with the town to make sure they're in sync with respect to the, this law, because presumably, the town will also come out with a law similar in the same topic. And it would be a shame for the village to be totally out of sync with what the town comes up with and vice versa. So you could have, theoretically, you could have a one B&amp;B on one street with one set of laws and, you know, or actually on the same street, one house down, under a separate set of laws. So please, take your time, coordinate the effort with the town, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, thanks, Larry, appreciate it. And June, did you, you had your hand, you?
No, it's fine.
Oh, Sue, Sue's hands up, okay.
Sue Julian, 56 Monroe. And I agree with all of what Houston said, but I am a landlord, not in the Village of Pittsburgh, but I have been for 40 years. I've frequented Airbnbs and I have, I've dealt with a lot of very bad tenants in the last 40 years. And I currently live at 56 Monroe, where the two to the left of me are rental properties. The one kitty corner is a rental property, the one across the street is a rental property. And most of the time, we get very good neighbors, but they're not owners. And they don't put out decorations and they don't put out flowers and they, they just don't, and I'm not saying all renters, because that's not true. I have many renters that, they treat the property like it's their very own home and they do love it and treat it with respect, but there are many more that don't. And so I personally would prefer not to have short term rentals. I think we have too many long term rentals as it is, and then to add short term rentals on top of long term rentals, we hardly have any people who, who own their houses and live in the village. And I think that's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your input. Well, hang on a minute, let's just see if there's, thanks, question. Is there anybody else or anything on, yeah, we have some people online, so.
Okay, I have two comments I received by email and then I have two comments through the virtual. Mary Ellen Volusia, 24 Fountain Avenue, says, "Trustee for the Village of Pittsburgh, as stewards of our historical community, I respectfully request that you further research and explore the issue of short term rentals in our borough of the village prior to any determination. The issue of short term rentals is one that can and will have long term effects on the quality of life of all residents in the Pittsburgh village. It would seem that such a major decision should be involved, involved discussion with village property owners. Thank you for your consideration." Okay, Brandon Herb Kramer, 17 Gulf Avenue. "Please read and incorporate into the meeting our comments allowing short term rentals. When any new proposal is offered or any change to existing codes and rules offered, we ask how will it enhance or help our village? For short term rental proposal, who benefits other than building owners? We already see renters not taking as much care of the property they inhabit as homeowners do in general. To have people from all over the US and beyond come to our village for a week or month or a few days does not in any way benefit the residents and taxpayers of the village. Traffic and parking remains a huge issue as does litter. Two, for the topic of ordnance by video, we disapprove of that as well." Sorry, I didn't realize she went on this one. "Face-to-face discussions have for the last 40 years been essential for residents to meet the representatives by school so wide. There is any benefit for needs not held in question." And, let's see here. Oh, I lost one of my speakers. Okay. I have Mr. Marshall now. Mr. Marshall, are you able to speak?
Thank you. So I guess the first thing is, is there's a lot of comments from the public tonight that are concerned about the residential character of the village. And at the same vein, I recognize the value that Airbnbs can offer for residents or for visitors coming to our village. And I think what I'm hearing tonight, and I think what I'm hearing from the board tonight, is that the public's going to have an opportunity to offer additional comment prior to a code being adopted and voted on that would be material and substantive in nature, such that we don't have to tonight try to determine the exact merits of the code that we might adopt. Is that true? Is that true?
Yeah, this is really research discussion, you know. Again, as I said when we first introduced this item, we don't have a code for this. This is the opportunity for us to really investigate and, you know, vet this and really see how do we want to handle this as a village. So, I think.
I appreciate, appreciate you fielding that question. I guess that just then the follow-up would be, would you like for residents or would the trustees be willing to put together a committee of residents to work through some of these specific elements of the code that would be appropriate in order to allow Airbnb's to operate?
Yeah, we can consider that. I mean, you know, I think, you know, I want to look at some of the legislation, you know, and do a little more research as well. We can bring back our intended item, you know. I don't see a problem with that at all.
Okay. Thanks. That's all.
Yeah, thanks so much, Dave. Have a good evening. And. Nope, that's all I have. Okay. You know, so I, I, I've really appreciated all the input, and I, you know, everybody really cares about the character of our community and what it means when we do look at something like this. So I agree. I think we need to be very deliberative, and no one's jumping into anything here. You know, we're really trying to do the research and find out. I'm certainly talking with other municipalities, other mayors, you know, to see how are they handling this too? You know, what does that look like? Because there's many other communities that are like ours as well. Yeah, cool.
Thank you. To that end, given what you've just conveyed, Mayor Plummer, and given what we have heard here, I would just, I would like to point out, I know we don't need any reminder, but the role that the Board of Trustees plays in crafting legislation. And to that end, I am going to take a quote from something that I read from another municipality and stuck in the Village of Pittsburgh in the key, key areas. And this is what I feel should be the beginning point for us as a board, rather than jumping in in the middle, trying to craft legislation before we entirely understand all of the issues and the ramifications of what we are considering. And that quote is, "For us to develop right from the beginning what our policy is as a village, so that everything that we craft then points," and that is our starting point. "It is the policy of the Village of Pittsburgh," this is an example, "to encourage stable residential neighborhoods for the health and well-being of all village residents, businesses, and guests. The village permits short-term rentals under conditions that foster neighborhood cohesion and that attempt to keep property values affordable for owner occupancy." This is an example of a policy that we could develop, and then everything that we do would be guided by that.
And, and part of that's also, you know, our comp plan addresses some of this as well. So I think, you know, we're looking.
So this is assuming we're starting from the, the starting point that we would allow short-term rentals. There might be also conversation from some zones who are not in favor of short-term rentals. So it is the responsibility of the village board to first decide on a specific list of goals that a short, new short-term regulation should accomplish before discussing any of the technical details of how to write and implement the potential new regulations. First steps for the trustees should include outlining the village's larger strategic objectives and how potential changes to housing patterns will impact the village long-term. Effective short-term rental regulation starts with explicit policy objectives and a clear understanding of what regulatory requirements can be enforced. That's something also that we would want to look at as a board. In addition, I would respectfully suggest that, that the concept of a village residence task force is an excellent one. I think it's a very good starting point that we're operating on, on parallel tracks. The trustees are doing their due diligence by developing the policy that would guide us in the future, and residents would be conforming a list of maybe definitions of what's short-term rental, what is owner occupied, what, you know, what the guidelines might be to bring to the board, and then we would begin to be able to craft legislation around, directed at what we are, assuming will be our policy. The, the task of the committee would be to research potential impacts and then to present to the board results, and then we can begin to formulate.
Sort of like a mini-plan. Some of this actually is referenced in our comp plan, and I think.
Because it does have long-term effects.
Sure. Oh, I think we're all in agreement. I mean, I think we're all saying the same thing, you know. I mean, the hour's a little bit late. I mean, I think let's, let's continue with this and let's really.
Yes, but I think I'd really like to, to commit the board to forming a committee, a citizens committee, and other stakeholders, so that they can, they can bring to the board. And it helps. Everybody, everybody, everything helps.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Great. Okay. Renee, did you, no, did you? I know, it's getting, it's getting a little late, I know. Okay.
Well, is there, trustee line permission, if you would like to commit the board to this? Is there a motion to create such a committee and possibly put a notice on the village website saying that we are soliciting input on the topic of short-term rentals? And all interested parties should provide their, their names and contact information.
I'd like, I'd like to look really slowly. I mean, I think it's a great idea. I just don't know that I'm ready to do anything tonight. I think I'd, I'd like to gather more information and let's have another board discussion. It's just late and we have more agenda items, but I, I'm, I'm with you on it. I just, it's, it's late, you know. We're probably going to be going into the.
I don't know. Would you like to make a motion?
Do whatever you want to do. I, I mean, I just, I'm looking at, you know, we have executive sessions coming up, we have other items, so.
Don't want to inject myself, but it would seem helpful if there was a guidance document from the trustees to outlining what you expected of the committee, how many members are going to be on the committee, you know, that sort of thing.
Maybe a motion.
So that they actually know what their job is.
Okay, so perhaps for the, just an informal action item would be to parameterize the number of members for the committee, perhaps from what sections we're, we're looking, you know, residents, short-term rental owners, that kind of thing.
Yep.
And, and then at the next meeting, we can take that step and.
Yeah, the process of how to set it up and establish.
I would also add, you really need to give them a job.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
What's, what's the goal of the committee? What do they need to do?
Right. Okay. Okay. So we'll, we'll do that, right? I mean, do we, we don't need a motion. I mean, this is something we know we want to pursue. So really, you know, and then we'll start to pull it together.
I mean, we have a subcommittee of two work out there or something.
Yeah. Yeah. And start to pull it together.
Is that a recommendation of the board?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yes. Okay. And then we, we kind of have to move on. I mean, it's, it's a hard night for people. We appreciate everybody's forbearance here. Candy Caravan, St. Croix, Sixth Street.
From what I heard tonight, and with, which I agree, I wonder if the board would revisit the request for a moratorium to allow thoughtful delivery to crafting a possible extension.
Thank you for that. Okay. We're not, we're not to the point, I mean, we're looking at setting up a committee to look at the whole enchilada. Yeah. So, but we're not, not quite there yet.
Could you want to speak, John?
If I could.
Oh, John, yes. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
One, one last thing, please, and then we need to move on.
John Lindbeck, 62 State Street. "One of my biggest concerns is people that own Airbnb's that don't live here. And we've got a public hearing next week on 58 State Street that's being developed as two luxury Airbnb apartments. And I submitted a FOIA request, and Doritia jumped through all kinds of hoops to get me the information. I was looking for the address of Mr. Karamana, and I got two different LLCs for his address. One is 2914 Hamilton, Geneva LLC, and the other address that he's got listed with the village or the ownership is Dwell Rochester LLC. So we don't know who this individual lives, and he's certainly not going to be living anywhere near the property. Thank you."
Thanks for that, John. Really appreciate that. Okay, so, you know, we'll, we'll pull the board, we'll pull it together, we'll start moving forward on this and start, start putting, putting our committee together and the parameters. I think, Jeff, thanks for your input on that. I think that was helpful. So.
Super comfortable calling out in public minutes. I don't know what we can do about that, but I don't feel super comfortable calling out the resident, the John, just, I don't know anything about the people who own that. Is that fine? Okay.
Okay. So, moving on, let's see where we are. Why don't we just do the bid approval for the back hall entrance? That's pretty quick.
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Thanks, everybody.
As the board's been aware of, the village has received, we received initial approval from HPV for the back hatch rents. The right one is seek to redo the back entrance. Everybody, here, we've seen the plans. Now's the time to go out to bid. This is the bid pad to be presented, but I will state that there is going to change.
A tiny change.
It's a tiny change. Tiny. We're moving the sidewalk closer to the building.
I think it's going in roughly, not, not, maybe not a full four feet. Can I speak to this?
Absolutely.
Because the principal, Jenny Aaron's from Barrow Architecture. Barrow's doing the project. When she was out back looking at it, it actually was after she looked at the roof, she noticed that the slope was a little steeper in the area where the sidewalk was going to be. So she thought, well, if we move it up a little bit, it'll be much more, even though it's not an accessible staircase, it's just, it just is a better slope for anybody going to and from. You know, it's just more about the egress and how that would look. So it just literally was just moved over, but it is an amendment to the plan. And also, it is going to go before the HPV every week next week, because they're, they're going to be setting up a special meeting. So the motion for, if someone would so move to approve the amended version of the site plan pending HPV's review there, you know, so we can just keep the process going.
Okay. I will make that motion. So I just need approval to put this out to bid. Change the.
It's not approval of amended site plan.
What would it be?
It's approval of amended bid document.
Amended bid document. Thank you, because the site plan would actually be through HPV. Thank you for that correction.
So it's a plan for the board to understand. We're hoping to put it out to bid next month. We're going to give it a full month out there, bring it back, get the bids in early December, so like, I believe, the day here is December 1st.
Yeah, I think, don't hold us to it. It's like, but it's early December.
Presented, the bids would be presented to you in December with the intention of giving the bidders the time to come to do the project in the spring. So we're hoping that Patrice Akos will then get us enough interest in the project. Okay? So you'll see the numbers, then we'll discuss financing, then we'll become capital projects. Okay? But at this point, you need authorization, you go ahead and put this out to bid with the change dependent upon HPV approval. So moved.
I'll, I'll say it. I was very impressed with the thoroughness of the proposal. I think that was probably the biggest challenge behind the pitch.
Yeah. Yeah. I wouldn't miss a thing.
And I'm glad I didn't take that. Okay. Trustee Spencer?
Hi.
Trustee Lightyear?
Hi.
Trustee Lightyear? Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for that. We're moving forward. Okay. The tree, tree legislation, this is for the Street Tree USA to get back in the program. And the town, this is, the town just recently adopted this, I think maybe half a year ago. And so what Attorney Turner has included is that sort of the sample of their legislation.
Exactly what they adopted.
Yeah. So, yeah, exactly what they adopted. And it's pretty straightforward, you know, it's a good fit to become a member of Street Tree USA and be able to also funding the grants.
We have certified legislation here.
Yeah. Yeah. We just show that, you know, we're, we're kind of, you know, we're stepping up, we're going to have a certified arborist, and actually, you have, you've all had the chance to look at it. Yeah. And it's, it's pretty straightforward. So, and, you know, using best practices and best management of our canopy. And it's a good program, you know, it's all geared to a positive outcome, which is great, you know, the idea of protecting our canopy.
So we have to form a tree department?
No, no, we just, we have a tree department essentially through DPW.
Okay, so you're the tree department.
And then the certified arborist would work with our DPW. Yeah, and that's exactly what the town did as well. You know, in other words, they, they recognize that you're already working with, you know, you know our street trees, you're handling the inventory. Now what we're doing is adding on that other layer with the certified arborist as well. So, all good stuff. So it's an opportunity then to direct Jeff to craft the legislation, so if we can hear a motion.
I just have one question for you. Also, another person has a question.
Oh, okay. Well, let's, let's take questions from the board first before the public. If you have.
Would there be anything that you feel, because the town is somewhat set up somewhat differently, and we have these, all of these street trees that should be maybe retrofitted in some way, there's some language that you feel should be added to reflect what, what we have here in the village? Or do you think that this very general language that exists in the town code is official?
It's actually pretty, I mean, it's sort of based on model, it's based on a model of, you know, what.
So, I, I don't know if this is what you're getting at.
There's another element we're talking about, yeah.
I envision this just as a grant generator.
Okay.
I believe the boards could consider a more extensive ordinance protecting our trees and possibly consider an ordinance protecting trees on private property. You could define heritage trees, trees of a certain caliber, and that way you would be protecting the whole canopy of the village, not just that part that lies within our property. Entirely after the board, obviously. But there is out there, there are examples of municipalities who have done both. But at the very least, you should have, we should have a better code on protecting our street, our trees, and our property and in the right of way and all that stuff. We should have a better, better code. Right now, we have one paragraph. You may not cut down these trees.
Right.
That's, that's it.
We need a little more, I, I mean, I would like to see that, frankly, because.
That's a different.
Through our.
Right. Because it's, you know, again, it's best practices, and I used, years ago, I lived outside of Boston, and there was ordinances protecting trees in, on private property and in, in addition to the municipal property. And the discussion was, and I, I believe in this, that the trees, trees don't know boundaries. You know, the canopy is the canopy, no matter whether we own the tree or someone owns a very large caliber tree that's contributing to the canopy. So I really think it's something we need to, to visit, and that's, that is something different, as Jeff pointed out. This is, again, really helping us get on that list for some additional funding, so that's why I'd like the board to consider directing Jeff to, you know, craft this.
It's really, it's not going to be a hard job. It's just putting the right verbs or the right nouns in.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Anybody on the board? Are you good? Yes.
Robert, 47 Washington Avenue. As you know, it took me about twenty years to restore the tree canopy in the village, and I was successful in developing a successful urban tree program using advice from Jerome Richardson Wolf and the Cornell University Urban Horticultural Institute to guide the process in developing our street tree canopy. As I expressed at the last meeting, I'm concerned because we're starting to get holes in that planning, and I'm hoping some trees will be planted this fall. I would be happy to volunteer to give you some language, because I think if you're going to do a tree ordinance, you really need to address the specific issues regarding the street trees, understanding how important they are for traffic calming. A study that was conducted in Buffalo, New York demonstrated that having, simply adding a street tree canopy where the trees branch over the street has the effect of reducing traffic speeds of up to seven miles per hour, which is significant. I think if you just draft an ordinance to get grants, you're going to create confusion and you're going to have a sort of dead part of the code. I think it makes more sense to spend the time to do something thorough, to really articulate what our tree policy is in the village, both from the historic preservation standpoint, understanding that using native trees and some of the new cultivars like light resistant elms and zelphova trees to preserve, enhance, and restore where necessary the street tree canopy. canopy that we have throughout the village. And if you'd like any help on that, obviously, I'm sort of the village tree expert. I would be happy to assist the board with that. Thank you.
Thanks so much, thanks for your input. I just want to say something that, just as we have adopted legislation specifically to become a climate smart community, this is, again, a specific piece of legislation to join the Street Tree USA program and in no way obviate any other of the legislation that we've just been speaking about, which we all think is very important. And, you know, speaking of planting the trees, how many trees have just been planted over this past?
Twelve.
Yeah, twelve and with more to follow, so.
Yeah, one more will be next Tuesday, and then two will be in the spring.
Yeah.
So a total of 15, that will be.
We're filling back in on some spots, but there's always more to do, which is great. So really appreciate that.
Can I just ask, what kind of trees?
Uh, some red bloods.
Natives?
Yeah, um, elms.
I know.
I'm trying to think of further ones.
I know, I'm trying to remember what the other one was.
There's a hack berry in.
And then we just, we also planted a maple down on, sure.
Yeah, there's a unglazed maple, there's just ten of them.
Yeah. I know.
I think that's the majority of them.
Well, that's. Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to direct our attorney to craft the legislation for the Street Tree USA program. So moved. Okay. Second for the motion? I guess it's one, I have to say. Okay, I'm going to second the motion because I think this is important and I think it'll make it, it'll help us become eligible for grant funding. It also helps us accrue additional points as a climate smart community, which, again, helps us source grant funding.
We get a discussion on that?
Sure.
I think that this is a good step in the right direction. I also see a point, given the trees are so critical for the village, and it seems so clear that there is a certain direction we could expand this legislation to be even more productive. What I would like to do is take this discussion and defer it for one week to figure out if there are specific avenues that we want to expand the scope of work in for our attorney's to craft more comprehensive legislation to get the tree section done at once.
I'm hearing that. You know, why don't we, I'd like to do it this way, because there's also a timeframe for us to be able to sign up for the campaign, you know, the windows are open. So I think we could have a second motion that could be entertained after we go through this one, to direct our attorney to look into comprehensive street tree legislation and get back with us, maybe with some samples. I have some samples as well, and we can start to pursue that.
Could you tell us the date that we're working with?
We have to do it by the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, you know, I just thought, in the interest of time, let's just, you know, move forward with this piece. But I do think we need to look at far more comprehensive legislation, and I can work on it.
Okay.
And bring it right back to the board, and we can start to really craft something. You know, I'm in agreement, I think we're all in agreement, that we'd really be best betters. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion that has.
I'm just curious, is this just for legislation or do you also need to have the arborists?
Let's get through the legislation. This is a legis, this is to direct him for the legislation and then we'll take, that will follow. Yep, we're on it, Zach. I know, just looking for that, okay.
Actually, there's two questions to the, to the motion then. The motion to adopt?
I would just like to keep them separate motions. We just now have a motion to just, you know, let's, let's take care of this street tree USA. And then let's make, I would entertain another motion to, you know, let's have our attorney and let's research more comprehensive legislation that really addresses the canopy and viability and how we make that sustainable in the village.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second, we have a roll call, please.
Trustee Lightyear?
Aye.
Trustee Lightyear?
Aye.
Trustee Spencer?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion has.
Okay, how about another motion to direct our?
Actually, I would like to, perhaps rather than, I feel like this is still a bit vague to direct our attorney on. He's got a direction in mind instead of to do this right now, but I'm thinking that we may want to wait one meeting and make this motion on the next meeting with a specific type of.
We can do it, and you know what I'll do, because we've been speaking about this already, so we've just been starting to collect some really great legislation from other communities and other models. So why don't we send that out, so you guys can start taking a look. So Dorothea, that's going to go on the next agenda? Okay, then you're right, then we'll really build on and really be far more specific. Because there's so many communities that have been doing this for decades, and so, and successfully. So this really is an opportunity to prove it to that. Okay, so we're good? All right? Thank you, thank you so much. Coats are hung. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, everybody, thanks so much, really, really great. Okay. Next up, oh, this is, and this is just very quickly, this is just a Village in Bloom, it's just a continuation of the pollinator program that we had initiated with the Seneca Zoo Society. You know, they did the pollinator garden in the back. So we're planting, we'd like to plant about a thousand early pollinator vols. The scout troops have reached out to me, and so I want to bring it before the board. They're all excited about planting pollinator vols to come up in the spring. Hopefully, most of them will bloom in time for the PGA Open. Just in the areas, you know, along State Street, for example, we have the bulk up in front of where Esports used to be, that's going to, we can plant some of that. Where the medians are down by Washington and also, you know, by the bridge. So the picking areas were entrances to the village. So they'll be essentially that first step, really, of what the Seneca Zoo Society has been advocating and talking with us about, you know, last year, of setting up a pollinator corridor through our village. And then the goal would be to also have our residents in their own yards help with the pollinator corridor. You know, so this is kind of the first step in the fall, planting vols, you get the early pollinators out, you know, with grape pies and some porpoises and the daffodils and the tulips. And then over time, we can expand on that and add in natives and perennials and things like that.
So what does they ask of us? We have the cap legislation?
No, no, we're good, I mean, this is something that I'm just updating you, because I'm so excited, the scout troops are really excited about it. Rotary may be helping us as well. It's for Garden Club, you know, I mean, it's just, I think it's a good thing. I think we're just taking it to another level and hopefully we have enough rooms for the PGA Open, so we kind of love them both. So that was just kind of, it could have been a member item, but I just thought it was kind of a great thing. Oh, yes, Bob?
I think before we start planning more, so much of the landscaping, because we obviously lost our landscaping this year, needs attention. I saw the recent work that was done at the median at North Main Street in Washington Road, looks great, but the median going up Washington Road is still full of weeds. The rose bushes are on the same place, they need a significant meeting. At the gateway of Monroe Avenue near the west shore tracks, there's an area that I had clear, well, it's there, that's come back up and it's brushed again. So there's a lot of areas that really need, I know you've been short-staffed this year, but the fit and finish of the village has really suffered, and I hope we can get back in the shape of the most.
Thanks so much for that. Yeah, Zach, do you want to speak to that? I know that's really been just a huge, huge concern and.
Construction has kind of.
Construction's really.
It is falling early this year, we've been a bit happened to years, you know, nine, about two and a half, three weeks this week, doing these type of things, so that's kind of taken it. So we're beginning to median on Washington. The road ramps, we did need maybe four weeks ago or so, but it's just, it's a chore keeping up a little without having a steady person doing that.
But we're working on it.
Yeah, but now construction's ramping up, we'll run on our labs, so we're going to be able to get back in there. I can just get this signed, so, because I'm just worried, we get snow, and those are very good, it's kind of coming this off.
Okay, okay, we could, let's talk about that offline. It's, the hour's getting late, and I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss a proposed property acquisition and also regarding an employment matter pursuant to 105, section 105 of the Public Officers Law.
Is this a real estate property acquisition?
It's, it's property acquisition, so.
Real estate, you mean real property?
Yeah, potentially, we'll see, we'll see. Okay, so I have made a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Lightyear?
Aye.
Trustee Lightyear?
Aye.
Trustee Spencer?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
You looked at me and called me Lightyear, I'm like, she's losing it.
I am.
Okay, so we can.
Present tense?
Let's all go, go into the office, please.
Okay.
Are we ready?
Go for it.
I make a motion that we leave executive session, is there a second?
Call second.
Roll call.
Trustee Spencer?
Aye.
Trustee Lightyear?
Aye.
Trustee Lightyear?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion has.
Okay, so regarding the hiring, or the hiring of an employee full time, is there anybody who would like to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we extend an offer to Peter Bessie, or his currently, his current hourly rate for full-time employment.
Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lightyear?
Aye.
Trustee Lightyear?
Aye.
Trustee Spencer?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Okay. Now let's revisit South Street, the RFP, kind of where we're going with that.
So we want to.
I want this way.
I'm looking, I know.
I got no answers around here.
Well, I'm going to pursue some things with our traffic engineer, so do we want to hold off on this to see if there's any?
Well, I think, I think what we've learned in our conversations recently is that we may not have a budget enough money for the South Street project as it is, but we have enough money budgeted for the ramps, right?
We have money budgeted for the ramps, but those costs are going to be, this day and age, it's kind of hard to say if that will cover everything without a more formal proposal, you know?
But we're, this, we're looking at the engineering cost?
Yes.
Which was originally, we need to discuss, right?
What was set aside was $25,000 for Fisher, for Fisher Associates, or not Fisher Associates, but urban engineer to come through.
And that was several years ago.
And design those curbs. That was back in 2019, and obviously those numbers are going to be way off base of what they would be today. I think we kind of have to reestablish what it would take to get an engineer in here.
Right, and that was a discussion that you had and Scott and I, and so you guys really kind of worked through numbers and came up with a number in terms of where we would go today.
Right, and I mentioned that for projects such as this, you know, we typically use between six, six percent for a straightforward project and 12% for complicated project based on estimated construction cost. That, that allows us to wiggle in on, so if you, if the number that we're working with is $400,000, right?
That would be a rough estimate, given that Wood Street has been added to this project, and not to include any geometry changes to.
Yeah, that was based on the last discussion, right, okay.
And then, so that's for design, but then you've got, then you've got advertising, bidding, construction, and inspection, that's usually another six to 12% on top of that. So when we were kind of trying to wiggle in on a number here, the number that kind of emerged in our conversation was closer to $70,000, which was not, just higher than $25,000 in my, pretty much anyway. And so then we, then I think we wanted to come here and kind of have this conversation, this is the reality of kicking the can down the street.
Yeah, because where it was five years ago would have been different, plus.
The project that would have been $175,000 is almost tripled.
Yeah.
Inflation and, you know, what you just mentioned with the employee, I mean, it's really hard to find people who want to work that are good, I think.
I mean, the drainage we pair out front, what I was quoted for, for tearing that out and replacing it a year and a half ago was $20,000. The same company came back and quoted it this year for $120,000.
There's gouging too.
That's why we ended up doing a line out front rather than tearing it out and replacing it. So now, you know, compounding that into a road that's 2,500 feet long with the addition of Wood Street and all those curb ramps, it's, it's exponential.
Yeah.
So.
Well, we have 100K towards the ramps.
100,000 towards the ramps. Yep, next, April, we'll get our new CHIPS EWR and Pave New York funds coming through, which is going to be roughly around $30,000. This, what we have currently through CHIPS is going towards the purchase of our tools yet. There should be a bid remaining from that, and which we can apply to this as well, but.
There's more to go down, infrastructure funding coming down.
And the road's not getting any better, so something, yeah.
Yeah, it's going to defer, yeah.
What are my suggestions to the board? You need to get, you need to get an actual price, what's going to cost for engineering in the road. So I don't see a problem going out for an RFP.
We'll be in January, because we've already budgeted for that price here.
I mean, that's, no, I mean, we need to get the quotes. We can get the quotes, we can take a look at it, establish a capital project for this, this is going to be a capital project every day. If you decide you want to fund it through fund balance, because we are sitting at a reserve, and take a look at our reserves, maybe we can swipe a little there. But we're going to have to, for the overall project, we're going to have to go out for funding. So it all can go into there. We have the grant, we have to establish with the engineering, the cost of the sidewalks, and we can get that stabilized, the dormitory though. You're not going to gain anything with it.
Yeah.
You've got to start downloading.
And we don't have, we don't have a deadline to use the funding that we got from Senator Brooke, or is there a deadline on that?
Go ahead, and then.
I need to file paperwork with the dormitory, getting a good estimate of the project, in our plans and spoken, how we're funding it. So we need to get moving.
Okay.
Priority number one would be to have something on paper ready.
Yeah.
Ready to go. And, and also, once we, the senator sees that we're spending that 100K, there's more. In other words, she's not going to keep giving us money if we're not doing the projects.
No, of course not.
So, and the same thing now with Jen Lunsford, if she wins this election as well, that is not a conversation we had.
We can establish a capital project, and we can phase this, maybe we start with one part, start with this part, but.
We could phase it, yes, you're saying.
We got to start.
We already said we were going to do the engineering, so let's get this.
We have $25,000 in this budget. Maybe a miracle will happen, I'm waiting for Christmas miracles. If not, you know, we do have fund balance, we do have reserves, we have possibly, you know, engineering can be covered by bonding, dandy, whatever we want to do. We're going to have to look at it anyway with the back entrance.
I'd say that whatever prices come through, if we do the RFP.
You don't have to, you don't have to, you can always turn down.
But it's information for us, we're getting, we're getting more concrete information which we don't have.
So we'll see what the RFP is.
If the board authorizes, we need to go ahead and put out the RFP, we'll use the similar timing as we're doing with the.
Okay, is there a motion to do this?
I'll make a motion to authorize, thank you, an RFP. Who's writing the RFP, what do I say? Traffic written, okay.
Yeah, we want to put it, I'll advertise it, put it out to the consultants for the proposals to come in and award the, at least the design aspect of it to.
So moved. For the, no, but for the South Street and Wood Street.
South Street, Wood Street, and, and the ramp.
The possibility, curb ramps.
Curb ramps.
Curbs and possibility of straightening out.
That can be.
We can have that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. You want to throw everything?
I'm trying.
I know, okay.
We'll be on to it once you want to.
Are you comfortable with the motion? We've got the motion, definitely. He's, he's so comfortable with it, okay. Is there a second?
Well, Renee said so moved after Scott was done.
Can you make a motion?
I'm making a motion, sorry.
You said so moved.
I know.
I move yours.
I make a motion, we have to.
No, no, she was done, she said so moved.
Yeah, I got a motion.
I'll send it.
Thank you. Okay, I thought you were saying that.
Roll call, second.
Justy Lampier.
It's so late.
I was.
Justy Lampier.
Aye.
Justy Stetser.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
I just voted no against my own motion.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll finalize this.
Okay.
With me.
Thank you for standing, you're so much.
See y'all.
Really.
You need to drive, you need to walk.
Later.
Are you, does I know member items?
We also.
Oh, no, you wanted us to go back into the session.
Do you need me?
Do we wanna do member items first?
Well, let's do the attorney question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff, I apologize, no, let's do that.
I don't have a member item.
Does anybody have?
I don't have a member item.
I do have one, but I'm sorry, can we wait until we come back, I guess, it's not, it's a long discussion.
Zach, I think we're good.
Okay.
Thanks, Zach, so much, okay. All right, you are.
So, you're going through attorney-client session?
So, I'll make a motion, well, do you wanna make a motion for which purpose, you know?
No, you just said, no.
Oh, no, it's an attorney-client, oh, Jesus, wait, yeah.
No motion needed.
Okay.
We're going into attorney.
We're going into attorney-client session. I know, I just.
Okay, so we're ready to go.
There's no motion now, we're just back in the meeting. Okay. I'll make a motion that we leave attorney-client.
We don't have to do that.
No, you didn't make a motion, and you don't need a motion.
Oh, okay.
You could acknowledge, you could acknowledge that we are now back in regular session.
Okay.
It's 10:55, and we're back on air.
It's been a long meeting. If I may kick this off, then I would like to just briefly mention that this is in relationship to the presentation that we had earlier from Supervisor Smith and some other members of the town staff, and that was on two items. First, on the project that is shortly going to be under construction behind the Recreation Center, the People Rec Center, and also on the pocket park. In contrast to what we heard earlier, I do believe that our municipality would be able to subject the town to the jurisdiction of our HPPV and perhaps planning board.
Would you want me to confirm that?
Sure, if you.
Yes, we do have jurisdiction, and the way you decide if you're going to take jurisdiction is to examine the nine balancing factors in the Monroe County Airport case.
Thank you very much, Mr. Karen. So I would, at this point, like to go through the nine factors, through brief discussion on each one, so that we may make a conclusion about whether or not we would like to subject the town to our zoning authority on these matters. Specifically, in the matter of the Spiegel Center project.
The pavilion?
The pavilion project, just to be clear. So the first item in the nine factors is the nature and scope of the instrumentality seeking immunity. And my understanding of this is that some of this actually goes back to a case of Rutgers State University, and the state university was the instrumentality. In this case, it appears that the town of Pittsburgh would be the instrumentality, even though this is associated with Recreation Center, it's town-owned, and I guess the town would be the instrumentality that is.
My interpretation as well.
And so I guess, in this case, I think it's important to make the point that the village is not, in my understanding, a political subdivision of the town. That was correct. A political subdivision would be where we exist because, created by and under the authority of the town, and we are not. We are an independent municipality and able to make our own zoning decisions. So under this criteria, my understanding, and I would like to give you the board members' thoughts as well, the point is that we are able to exert our zoning authority for this factor. Any other thoughts? Okay, I'd like to make one other point related to the case on this. In 1972, the case this comes from actually says, "Even if the proposed action of the immune governmental instrumentality does not reach the unreasonable station of incision reason, the instrumentality ought to consult with the local authorities and sympathetically listen and give every consideration to local objections, problems, and suggestions in order to minimize the conflict as much as possible." And that's from the case law, where they originally said that the instrumentality is important there, and they're saying that there should be an opportunity to be heard, which personally I feel like did not occur in this case. The second factor is the encouraging government's legislative grant of authority. Any thoughts on this, Mr. Karen?
The improvement, no, they are.
That's the town, and what is their legislative grant of authority?
Well, I don't believe that they have one, from what I was studying, I think that is, and correct me if.
They have the authority to take all actions of a municipal nature, and they own the property, so they do have that grant of authority.
Yes, I would say also, though, that our zoning code does not specifically give them the right to circumvent the processes that are prescribed by law, including HPPV, certificate of appropriateness, and site plan, which seem like they maybe apply to this. So, well, in some senses, they do have some rights, as being with that property, the, our code is specific that there are other provisions that may apply.
I would suggest the grant of authority goes further, in that they are acting with a governmental function, performing a governmental task. This goes specifically to whether or not it's a governmental entity entering into engaging in private commerce. They run some kind of restaurant, they like.
Right, okay.
Coffee shop, whatever it is. Is that, you know, what is it that's going on here? I think that may tie into three as well.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask you.
So, the third factor, then, the kind of function or land use involved, our attorney spoke to this, and I guess, as far as the, we moved for a pavilion, the supervisor went a little bit into the function, how it's gonna be used. I still don't feel like I had a really great idea of how else is it gonna be utilized by the recreation department? Is it going to be for reserve time, other functions, and so I guess, to me, that part of the planning is a little bit vague.
That part seems pretty clear to me. It's part of a recreation community center, it's gonna be used by, you know, activities that are going on there, kids that are lined up for the, you know, app care for the summer program, you know, if I go over there for a picnic as a citizen, that one's pretty clear to me. In addition to what he mentioned.
It would have been nice if we had known, had that information prior to this meeting, I think residents would have felt the same way.
Yeah, I would like to know, for example, and this is kind of a brief meeting tonight, but if it's going to be put on the same reservation system as other town properties, or if it's gonna be, you know, structured 100% of the time, or is it able to have people kind of walk in and use it?
Like Kingsbend Park and things like that.
Right, and it's going to more structured, you know, investment, infrastructure by the town, so who's it going to serve? It's all elaborated with the, how it's worked out.
It serves us all, I'm not.
Yeah, I don't see that as a limiting factor.
That's a limiting factor.
So if I, number four, the effect local land use regulation would have upon the enterprise concern. I did briefly look through the code. So it seems like there are provisions of our code that apply, HPPV, certificate of appropriateness, lighting code, site plan, and also possibly bulk requirements for the LDR district. I noted that one thing about this plan is that it seems to be about 17 feet high, and the LDR height requirement for accessory structures is 12 feet, so it seems like they also may need to apply for adherence if we decide to subject them to zoning authority.
I think Steve Law spoke to that, as to whether he's not here. A part of it? Yeah, yeah.
Because it's open, it's not.
Yeah, it was, it had, it was a different, he had a different read on that.
Yeah, this is just a brainstorm.
Uh huh, okay, so that was number four, okay.
So I guess, some of these criteria overlap, of course, but I just thought that's the kind of review in a public hearing with site plan that they would actually be going through if we were to decide to carry through this process. Any other thoughts on that next?
No.
Alternative locations for the facility in less restrictive zoning areas.
No, this one, we can't put it somewhere else, it needs to be in the, by the community center. We're saying in another, in a less restrictive zoned area, like where else?
Town goes in orange, and then the less restrictive.
Yeah, so I think this one, they don't, it can't go someplace else.
I think it's an amenity for the, most likely it's an amenity for the Spiegel Center. I was thinking, though, that they do have other parks, and other pavilions, and probably places where they could build.
Then it wouldn't be used for the seniors to have their lunches, and for the kids at the playground, and for the farmer's market, and yeah, so I disagree, I don't think it could go.
It's serving the needs of the.
Of that facility.
Come to that facility, whether they're in the town or the village.
Yeah.
Any thoughts on that?
No, no, good.
Number six is the impact upon legitimate local interests.
A good, a positive thing for the community, for the neighborhood?
I think this is, yes, I agree that, you know, they've had a tent there for the last couple of years, and I think that's been a good thing, it seems like people, it's helping people to utilize the space for certain areas. I think that green space is also a legitimate local interest, and particularly strong one, given that it's in the middle of the village, and there are very many of them. When the high school yards are pulled, when the school is utilizing them, you know, I live around that area, and I see a lot of people use that for dog walking. I saw a lot of concern in 2017, when about half of the space was cut out for a parking lot. I think that, in that sense, there's very strong negative impact, not to say that one is greater than the other, but I think this is why it's, to me, this is a very compelling point, to actually go through the process so that we can have more input to see if the negative impact of losing that green space is how that compares to the benefit of the people.
Well, I think that's what this board needs to weigh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I think, you know, it's an interesting point. I actually, my concerns were about that parking lot, you know, we all had that. And so, in many respects, I think that was something that should have been addressed, and we tried to address it. But now, with a pavilion, is that such a huge significant impact on the remaining green space that you cannot conduct activities? Is it somehow so much more limiting in terms of can you not have a game played, or, to me, the parking lot was sort of the big bridge that we all trust.
Right, that determine whether you could have a soccer field or not.
Yeah, and, you know, and I used that field as a child, I mean, that was, you know, so I'm not so sure that the pavilion has that level of impact in that same way.
Well, I see it, in some regards, makes it more useful in the summertime, when you can kind of get a little shade, and you can sit there as a family while your kids are on the playground, and so it changes things to how you use the green space around it.
Yeah, I think it's. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I think one thing I'm concerned about, and maybe I'm wrong on the plans, is it seems like it's the, you know, 24 by 36 pavilion, the pad that's, the concrete pad that extends over past that, and then also potentially a 41-foot or 44-foot pad that goes from the pavilion to the parking lot. And maybe that doesn't, maybe are the plans wrong?
I think it was just extending the walkway along the parking lot for essentially accessibility. I think it was an accessibility issue, you know, whether wheelchair or, I think that's, that was the, my understanding.
I think that's the idea.
Yeah, I think we have compliance.
So I think all of that is really good, I guess I just, you know, to me, part of the point of going through the zoning and site plan is that there's a board that's really good at this, and I would like to see if there are ways that we could mitigate the negative impacts of the footprint of this, and achieve, of course, the accessibility concern. So, to me, that's kind of another solvable concern.
Okay, let's, where are we?
I.
Go ahead.
Yeah, alternative methods of providing the proposed improvement.
Is the proposed improvement the pavilion?
Yeah.
Alternative methods. Sort of be keep putting up a tent and taking it down.
Right, and they've been.
That's what I came up with.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, that's the only thing I could come back to.
Like, that's not sustainable, nor is it beneficial for the community, really.
To me, that was a temporary method, that, you know, that was addressed at the meeting, saying, geez, the genesis of this is COVID, we recognize that the seniors needed to be outdoors, it was safer, and just as, for example, we had the same issues in our village, so it was recognized that this could really serve a need in a more permanent way.
Yeah, I agree that it's a different kind of a use in the white tent. Is the pavilion gonna be better, in my personal opinion, probably, for doing that, and I think that it's probably a great project. I think that the, my preference is that we would go through the process and have more public input to evaluate that. Shall we move on?
Yes, sure.
Okay, the extent of the public interest to be served by the improvements.
Gets to what we've already been talking about, we do believe it's a benefit to the community and to the community center, so.
Yeah, they certainly have, park improvements certainly have benefits for those who use them.
Yeah.
So let's move on to the next one.
Sure.
Intergovernmental participation in the project development process and opportunity to be heard.
That's. There isn't a lot of opportunity for the community to be heard, we heard tonight.
Certainly in the village, and certainly, you know, we were concerned about, you know, our neighbors on Stonegate, you know, at the town level, they had gone through their process of, you know, and as villagers, we have access to that process as well. So, I'm, you know, sort of weighing that again, it's that balance, you know.
Well, with the role and making sure we were informed.
Right.
Should we be reading?
Right, so, you know, they had public meetings, they did the plans that were, you know, all that, so, but here we are.
Yep.
Yeah, for this one, this is the one that really, by far the most heavily weighted in favor of going through our process. The first time the board heard about this was really tonight at our meeting, and it seems like, from what the supervisor said, maybe they even started today. You know, they've got a fence up, they've got a dumpster up, they've got, they made the plans, they went out to bid, they accepted contractors to do the work, and we're going full steam. We missed out on site plan, we've got neighbors who have concerns, who have concerns about the previous work they did there, and to me, this, just by not subjecting them to a zoning, it really loses a big part of the benefit of having local government to help people balance the different factors and the impacts of community development. Any thoughts? Okay.
I have a thought.
Sure.
On four.
On four?
We always, I mean, we take applications on their face value, and part of this presentation tonight was that there was a grant expiring. And part of subjecting our local regulations now might be the cost to town and our senior residents and children, wherever else, the use of this pavilion.
Yeah, yeah.
That's another negatively in that, yeah.
So, I mean.
Something we missed, that's a good point.
Yeah, that is a good point. I have a question in terms of how we look at this balancing, it's not an all or nothing type of.
It's a shake it up in the shaker and.
And see overall where we come out.
I always make this analogy, it's like the Supreme Court's definition of insanity, you know, you can't define it, but you notice when you see it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, you know what it is when you see.
All things.
All things considered and melded together into an answer. An answer whether or not this board should apply its local zoning and HPV code.
Okay. So if I may, based on our discussion and based on the input from our attorney, it seems that our common understanding is that if we so choose, based on our consideration of these factors, we would be able to subject the town to our zoning authority. So I will make a motion that, based on our discussion, we will subject the town to our zoning authority. Right, a second.
And the HPV code as well, because it's not under zoning.
I'm sorry, yes, I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The relevance of the laws.
I'm a second for the sake of this session.
Any, any discussion?
We've already talked about.
I know, we've had a heck, went through it, so.
We did go through it.
No, okay.
Trustee Lanfeer?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfeer?
No.
Trustee Spencer?
No.
Mayor Palmer?
No.
Motion, yes.
If I may, I would just like to thank everybody for working through this for the late hour and for the respectful and thorough discussion this morning.
Thank you, thank you so very much.
Giving me a stewardship, yeah.
What has just occurred, I would also like to go through the same exercise with the park proposals.
And have the public, we have some time, as we brought up earlier.
So we may, we may wish to apply this balancing test and come up with a different equation.
Could we have a brief, brief attorney-client session, please?
Okay, brief attorney.
It'll be three minutes.
Okay, brief attorney-client session. I make a motion, will you adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Welcome.
Trustee Spencer.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfeer.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfeer.
Hi.
Mayor Palmer.
Hi, thanks, everybody, thank you very much.
It's a good meeting.
Yeah, it was a good meeting.